This is the Wolfboro Planning Board meeting for September 2, 2025. My name is Doug Reston. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my left, we have Jane Nielsen, Vaughn Dugan, Peter Goodwin, Roger Murray, and to my right, Steve Webster, Paul O'Brien, who's a representative of the Select Board, Kathy Barnard, and Julie Jacobs. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing for Patricia C. Hanson Revocable Trust, Tax Map 2020-2-112 Forest Road, Case 2025-23. It's a special use permit to construct a single-family dwelling, driveway, and walkway within the wetland buffer. This is the formal submission in public hearing. We have somebody to speak for the applicant?
Yes. Hi, I'm Peter Cooperdak, certified--
Make sure that microphone's on there.
It doesn't sound like it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Just bring it up to your mic. Just speak right up to it. There you go.
Okay, never did like these.
And you can bring it a little closer if you want there's room.
Okay. We'll see if that works.
That's good.
Yeah, okay. Yes. I've got a big enough mouth generally anyway, so I don't really need one of these things.
Oh, wow.
Okay. So, yes. As Doug mentioned, this is for a special use permit to permit a house on a vacant lot, vacant building site on Forest Road, 100 by 300 approximately deep lot. That is currently vacant and forested. The proposal would be to put, as allowed, under the special use permit ordinance, a 1,800-square-foot dwelling. This is what's shown on the plan. Includes a two-car garage, which is 24 by 26, and then a diminishing width of house that's 59 feet long, ranging from 24 to 16 feet wide. The impact would be 15 feet at its closest from the drip, the eaves, the overhang, to the wetland, as delineated on-site. The, there is a pervious walkway proposed on the wetland side to provide access into the dwelling. On the opposite side is proposed a leach field, which meets town or state requirements. So this application is for the building only, not for the septic system. The septic system can meet state and town requirements. The proposal is retaining a six-foot buffer along the current wetland edge. As we noticed during a site walk today, it is relatively sparsely vegetated, and the planner at the Technical Review Committee pointed out that impact may damage some of those trees. So the idea would be to replant that strip with native plantings as necessary. The stone wall that's shown in the plan would be if the grading plan requires the elevation to be raised, so that there would be a containment of the slope. Are there any questions?
The proposed pervious walkway is basically in the wetland area and then buffer area.
It's in the buffer area.
And at the same time, it is something which is not, not ideal. Could the walkway be on the other side of the building? It would end up meaning that the entrance to that building would be looking at their septic, but they could plant some plants there. And so therefore, you would be using, you would have less impact on the, on the buffer.
There is a significant grade change on the, to come up to the top of the leach field to go into the house. The house, you know, there's an error there. It says 504. The slab elevation is estimated at 704, which would be the same grade as the top of the leach field that's shown there. It, I just think aesthetically, it would be more comfortable to go along the edge of the wetland than on top of the leach field. I guess that's a call that the Planning Board has a right to make.
Aesthetics don't necessarily treat buffers nicely. And so therefore, I don't think aesthetics are necessarily a sufficient reason for impacting the wetland form.
Well, it's, once again, it's not impacting the wetland. It's impacting the buffer, which is a white pine forest, so.
But before we go further, a couple of housekeeping items I neglected to address at the beginning. We need to appoint an alternate to sit on this application. We don't have enough board members. So Julie, would you be able to sit?
Sure, I'll take my turn.
Thank you. And also, we did have a site visit this evening at 5:45 PM, which was attended by board members Roger Murray, Peter Goodwin, Kathy Barnard, Steve Webster, Paul O'Brien, and then John Thurston, who was there as a member of the public. So, that said, any further questions from the Board here?
I think there's a mistake on the proposed house slab elevation.
I did mention that, yes. It's supposed to be 704.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I would like to see the dimensions of the house shown on the plan.
Okay, well, like I said, it's, the garage is 24 by 26. The garage, the building length is 59 feet. It diminishes from 24 feet to 21 to 16 feet wide.
But if you look at the plan, what you're asking us to approve is an 1,800-square-foot house.
Is an 1,800, yes.
But it doesn't say what the dimensions of that house are going to be.
Well, that's--
I think that should be specified on the plan.
Well, that can certainly be added to a approved plan.
Mr. Chairman, question? So just so I'm clear, this proposed garage, 24 by 26?
Correct.
And then it's, is it 59 feet the entire length of the building?
No, no.
There's 59 feet of the habitable space?
From the garage to the far end, it's 59 feet.
I agree with Roger. This would be helpful to know what we have, what we're working with here.
Okay.
Thank you.
What are we going to be done with the excavated materials?
It's going to be taken off-site. There's no room on-site to store this material.
Nothing will be kept on-site. Everything goes up. We'll leave the property.
You have to leave the property. There's no room. That could certainly be a condition of approval.
Any other questions from the Board?
Yeah, I'd like him to comment on the Conservation Commission's comments to us.
I don't know what they are.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that the applicant has seen the Conservation Commission comments yet.
Okay.
Yeah, if you'd like. Thank you, Kathy. And certainly, you will need a moment to digest them.
Ah, if only a moment, that's great. Okay.
Actually, Conservation Commission was at the TRC meeting, the Chair, and indicated some of these items already to the applicant, so he knows about them.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy.
Okay, I've tried to digest this, this comment. This brings up the point that was raised, the TRC, that this would be considered unbuildable. Of course, that's the whole point of the special use permit process, is to protect the wetland to the greatest extent possible with the knowledge that buffer zones may, and wetlands, may have to be impacted for the proper and intended use of the property. Okay, so to call, declare this lot unbuildable simply because it impacts wetland setback is, is against the spirit of, of the law under which this ordinance was, was produced. However, I did bring, a question was raised at the TRIC, asking for examples of prior approvals to buildings within. I just happen to have some.
Any other questions from the Board?
Yes, I mean, I'm concerned because it says here, "Property lines approximate." It seems like we should have some sort of a survey by a surveyor that shows the actual property lines before we approve anything on this property.
Okay, this, this is a, the mentions are based on the deed to the property. I would expect, hope for, and acknowledge the need for this, a survey to be done for this property and to stake out the building. It is premature at this stage to spend that kind of money if there's not any ability to build a house on it. It seems like that's getting the more expenditure without knowledge of what they can actually do. That would actually be, so the restrictions of, that are shown on here, if the survey somehow came different on here, the setback requirements would adhere 15 foot from the wetland, not any, any closer than, or whatever setback the Board is interested in approving tonight.
Peter, did you receive the planner's review of this application?
I just, I just received it.
Okay. And do you have any comments to address his six items here?
Yes, I have lots to say on that topic, actually. That is an incorrect analysis of the, of state law. State law does not state that no one else can do site topography. What state law actually says is that no one but a surveyor can certify the site topography. But obviously, I would not be a septic system designer if that was a requirement in the state of New Hampshire, that only a surveyor could do site topography.
I don't think we're here to argue state law, but--
Well, that's what it says.
We're here to look at the impact of this layout, and you need to find the most optimum location.
Yep.
And closer would reduce that impact. So that's item one. There's little information as far as planting.
This is, again, a option, an opportunity to come up with that detailed information once we know that this is actually approvable. You know, you know, the plantings would be native vegetation. What the species were would be appropriate to the, to the area. That is not difficult to provide, and be glad to do that. And that could be reviewed by the planner and code enforcement officer as, as the building permit process is, you know, goes, goes through the building permit process. It seems premature, and maybe I'm, I'm got this all backwards, but to me, you know, spending significant funds on a project that's unapprovable seems like a foolish expenditure. Let's know that we can do something, and we can work the details with the statement that the area needs to be replanted. That's, I think, adequate. I, I don't have a problem with the concept at all.
I disagree with you.
Okay, and why?
There's a lack of detail. There's no grades, finished grades on the--
Well, there are, there are grades on the plan. Yes, there are. So please, that was a request. They, they have been provided. There is a 704 elevation around the leach field, a 702 that goes along it, goes across the front of the garage on the, on the roadside, and then, and then follows the stone wall out to the, behind the house. That's the grading plan. I don't think we need any more detail than that. It's going to be a raised, the house is going to be a raised plateau. There is the possibility that this would be what you would do if you're going to have a gravity feed system. If the owners wanted to do a pump system and lower the house, the grading system would be changed. It seems, once again, premature to make all these decisions and cast, have those decisions cast in concrete if we don't know if it's an approvable project.
Could we let the planner speak?
Yeah, Bill, if you could address some of the comments, in particular, item six, with regard to adherence with the special use application requirement.
I believe I obtained that from the ordinance. I mean, the fact of the matter is, is licensed land surveyors determine the property lines, and we need to determine the property lines to make sure we can fit this. But the issue of topo, the, the strip around the building, the drip edge, it's eight inches deep. If it is frozen, then in the rain, the water's going to follow the grade. Unless it's perfectly level, it's going to collect where the grades meet. So I've seen drip edges before, and you get a pool of water in the back corner of the house because the house rains. So without a spot elevation, we don't know if the drip edge is actually a stream. I mean, in, as a cross-section, it gives you one parameter, the depth and the material, but without putting spot elevations on it, we don't know if the water is going to run to one end of it and puddle.
The, it would be leveled. There's no need for spot elevations because the intent would be that that drip line trench would be leveled.
So perfectly level all the way around the house without any--
Well, on the two sides where there's eaves, yes.
Well, see, this is the thing, is you're explaining to me, and sort of narrative and dialogue--
Yeah, yeah, fine.
Can't be enforced. Our goal is to, our goal is to make sure that, I mean, to mention that we could work out the planning with the codes administrator. This group works out the planning and, you know, the planting and sets a policy. We enforce it. We can't enforce something that we negotiated with a person after the decision is made. It's very difficult to say, "We like this," and then get into a dialogue later and have an argument. It comes back here. So it's important that the level of detail is sufficient so we have something to enforce. And the codes administrator, myself, are not going to design the planting plan. We're going to enforce a planting plan that has been designed.
I, okay, so this is a different approach than this, these, these have gone through before. It's a growth process for everyone involved. I'm trying to understand the new, new wave of, of requests that are coming, which haven't been asked before. This has always been sufficient in the past. The, I'm, I'm, it's difficult to give a planting plan if you don't know what, what trees are going to be damaged by the thing. But I could certainly come up with a list of vegetation in that area, which is fine. I don't, I don't mind it. It's, it's, it seems a little more onerous to try to predict how a project will go. You know, generally, the way these projects have been approached in, in the 20 years I've been doing this, is that we set the parameters of impact and work the details as needed.
Peter, we did a site walk, and the neighbors were there.
Yep.
You know, you're describing a lot line as this row of spruces.
Yep.
That's not an engineered line that we can depend on.
Right.
When we're looking at this, I'm sorry, the last 20 years may have been done that way, but it--
Well, okay.
Should be surveyed, it should be flagged, it should be delineated. Flags should be shown on the plan.
Well--
When we walk the site, we can see what we're looking--
Then, then you're adding a lot of expense to a project without knowing that it can be approved. And that's just, seems like unnecessary in my mind because the, the, the lot lines showing on here are based on the deed to the property, and if a surveyor did it, it'd be pretty much like that. And, and I would certainly, you know, expect that a survey be done for this lot and the house be staked out before it was, foundation was poured. I would totally expect that as a, and if, and if there's some, some restriction that makes this building go six inches, shrink six inches, it's the 15 feet off the, off the wetland, that's the adherence. But if, if, if rules are changing, you know, let me know. I'm glad to respond.
I would say, Peter, that the rules aren't changing. We're just trying to adhere to them more carefully.
Yeah.
And that may be different as has it been done in the past, but we're trying to perhaps correct some of the omissions that we have made in the past.
Section 175, 10.1, B, under special use permits, just to see where this is coming from, provides, "Wetland's boundaries shall be delineated by a wetland scientist, certified wetland scientist. The plan shall be prepared by a licensed land surveyor or professional engineer if it contains property boundaries or topography and construction details for building or erosion control slash stormwater management. Our proposed landscaping structures shall be designed by a professional engineer, licensed landscape architect, or certified professional in erosion and sediment control." So that's been in the ordinance. That's not something new.
Could you, could you give me that number again, please?
It's 10.1, 175, 10.1, special use permits, and this is B.
It, it also says in the beginning, in part of that, that you left out in accordance with New Hampshire state law, and that is not what New Hampshire state law says. It does say that wetland boundaries, in most cases, need to be delineated by a certified wetland scientist, but not all. And it, there is not a state law that says that topography. So I just take that as an erroneous assertion into the ordinance that is not enforceable.
I take the introductory prepositional phrase as being erroneous, but not the rest of the section.
Well, one feeds the other. We can have a nice, nice, interesting discussion here on the legality of what that does, but I, I contend that it, it suggests that it's the law that's making it happen. If your contention is that it's the town that's making that contention, that's a totally different thing.
Bill, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just, I mean, thank you to Roger for pointing out what the source was.
Bill, if you could bring the microphone a little closer to you.
The, the reference to New Hampshire state law mostly would be references, "Wetland's boundaries shall be delineated by a certified wetland scientist." Independently, that mean, the plan must be prepared by a licensed surveyor, and it, I mean, the plan should be prepared by a licensed surveyor. As a wetland scientist, you, you can delineate wetlands, but you can't be a surveyor, and that's what that says. There are different trades within the context of this position.
And, and once again, that just raises the cost of these things and raises the housing costs for, for somebody who just wants to build a house beyond what, what is, is really necessary. I can get a surveyor to stamp my plan. That's not a problem. I, I've been doing this work for 40 years, and I've worked for surveyors, and I have a lot of them. So that, that, but it just, it's, it's an unnecessary detail that, and expense.
I guess, if I may, Mr. Chair, that, you know, the discussion about that undisturbed six-foot and the trees, if the vegetation was on the plan showing what trees are in there, certainly in a six-foot-wide, undisturbed area, you know, where the canopy is hanging over that area, it would be very difficult to save a tree if it's excavated on one side under the canopy.
Well, there's--
So the purpose of the planting plan is to determine where your losses are and then try to make some accommodation to those losses. If you haven't surveyed and located the trees within the context of this plan, we don't know what the eventual planting plan is, and we're not going to design it for you in the codes department. You need to do it before you get here. Because this is the group that sets the policy. We don't set policy. We basically make sure that their decisions are sort of enforced. I can't do that if I'm designing it with you after they make a decision.
And we can't waive the zoning ordinance. We have no authority to do that.
So the, the general theme here, I think, is several members of the Board here have expressed concern about insufficient detail in a number of aspects of the plan, the planting that we just described, the dimensions of the building, things of that nature. And I wonder if it's possible to add some of that detail to make--
Oh, sure.
--it more clear to us.
You know, just let me know what you need. If you need every tree on the plot, the lot, shown on the plan, or any tree that would be impacted by this, I can put them on there. It's not a problem. If you need a survey stamp, you know, I can get you a survey stamp on, on the plan. If you need a, a boundary survey done at this time, that's a little, you know, that's going to take more, more, more work to do, you know, because a surveyor is going to come out and have to actually do all that work, which I didn't do because I'm not a surveyor. All my plans say on there, there is a note on the plan, "Property lines and site locations shown on this plan do not raise, present activities conducted by licensed landsur, surveyors or professional engineers." It's on all my plans, so there's no mistaking. You've approved all those plans for, for years. So I don't know what I'm supposed to say about the, the change in enforcement of the, of the rules. I think it's an erroneous part of the ordinance, but if, if you take it that it's in there so therefore it must be adhered to, I, I would appreciate you taking accordance of New York or Hampshire state law out because that's, that's a liability.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's very clear what is needed. It's in the review by the planner, and I, I really feel that the Planning Board should table this so that you have a complete look at this before you approve anything.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, and it's unfortunate that the applicant did not receive a copy of the planner review until earlier this evening.
I just got it 15 minutes ago.
Well, if, if every single thing in that was discussed at TRC, I think, people at TRC would confirm that.
I, I don't, well, anyways.
So, Peter, were you at the TRC?
Yes, and, and a few of these things were in there.
Okay.
But not all of them. And no mention was made about locating every tree. No trees were mentioned that somehow they're going to get damaged. The intent would that be that there wouldn't be no excavation close to the six-foot strip, but, you know, trees, roots go pretty far.
Peter, we had this discussion at TRC. Bill is correct, and--
Which, which discussion is that?
For the canopy, for, for example.
Yeah, that, that--
And the encroachment with the trees, which ones were going to be saved, that it needed to be surveyed, so that we could see what was there.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear, I didn't hear it. I, I, I don't know when you, who you were talking, I, I certainly did not hear it. I think that would have been nice to know.
I was sitting next to you when I heard it, so.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I heard, I heard an interest in filling in if trees were damaged. Fine, great idea.
I agree with, with Kathy's points, table this until we can get the information we need.
I also think that we need more information about the septic system. I mean, has anything been submitted to the state or not?
Well, no, because we haven't gone through, I can't get through the Building Department without this. So no, it's shown on the plan.
Okay, but we need to see this, the location of it.
Steve, would you--
It's on the plan.
Steve, would you care to make a motion?
It's on a big area on the plan.
Okay.
And I know that at the, the field trip, you showed it, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's where it's going to be.
Okay, okay, I just need to know what you're looking for. You know, if you want the leach field staked out on-site, then let me know. I can do that.
Okay.
But no one has said that. If that's what you want, I just need to know what you're looking for. You know, I can't work in blind. I feel like I came in here with an interest in presenting this plan based on the-- I feel like I came in here with an interest in presenting this plan based on the information at the TRC. I have not had an opportunity to deal with the comments of the Conservation Commission concerning the impact, unbuildability of the lot. So the idea of tabling this without me knowing, if, if I come back with an 1,800 square feet house again and you just say, "Well, no, we don't want that," how, how am I supposed to? I want to be able to show you past approvals from this board that impact the buffer zone.
Peter, you have the review by the planner. You have the review by CONCOM. You need to circle back, review those documents.
So you're not going to, you're not going to help me out here?
For now, we need to table this until...
Okay, well, I, I feel that this is...
So I'd like to make a motion. Please, go ahead. To table this until a more complete application can be submitted for review.
I'll second that motion. Is there any further discussion?
Are we going to table it?
We need to table it to a date certain.
Can you go to a date certain?
Or yes.
Was this ever opened?
No, no, no.
We did not open the public hearing.
Okay.
We're not open to, there's no more discussion here?
Please, go ahead.
So just, you know...
I'm sorry, we haven't opened public comment yet, so if, I would prefer that Peter remain the narrator here, if that's possible.
Okay. That's just, that's, you know, that's just how, in layman's terms. Wetlands set the setbacks.
That's what I'm trying to get across. But I'm not getting anywhere.
So with regard to a point of order, I guess, is it appropriate that we continue it or table it?
My only comment would be, there are a number of people here who wanted to speak on the issue. Is it worthwhile opening a hearing and then continuing to a later date? I, I don't know whether that's appropriate or not, but I just...
Yeah, so we have not yet accepted the application as complete.
Correct. That's correct.
Because it's not complete.
So I, I don't believe that we can open the public hearing until we've accepted the application.
Okay, that makes sense.
Do you, do you agree with that, Bill?
Yes, I believe you have to accept the application before you go through the hearing, that it's complete and adequate to proceed. We don't do that as staff.
No, I, I understand that. I'm just trying to make sure I have the rules of procedure accurate. So, motion's been made, I believe, Steve, you said to table it?
Yes.
And I've seconded that. Is there any further discussion?
What happens when we table something?
I think we should continue it if you give us some idea of when you would be ready, so it doesn't have to be re-noticed and so that the people who are here and are interested would know when it was going to be heard again.
I would like to be able to come here next month, but I am, in spite of everyone's insistence that the documents I've received today have outlined all the information that you're going to need, I am uncomfortable and believe that there is a lack of detail that, that more just keeps popping out as the longer we sit here. So that for me to be able to come back with a plan that's acceptable to you, I need more information. That's all I need. I need to know what you want. And these documents that you've given me do not do that to me. And also, there is a statement here from the Conservation Commission saying it's an unbuildable lot, and I would like to be able to counter that with past approvals. So I need direction and not of what I feel is being a fluff-off because of some perceived inadequacy in the plans.
So just...
Even, even, even parts of the plan that are there are perceived as inadequate. So it's a bit frustrating to understand where, what I need to do.
And that, that's reasonable. Just to be clear, the Conservation Commission has not declared it unbuildable. They don't have that authority.
I know.
They just made that recommendation.
I know, I definitely know that.
And nobody has said that that's the case as yet.
If you qualify and get a special use permit, then the lot's not unbuildable.
Right. That's what I'm trying to do.
Yes. And it's also reasonable that we should give you clear instruction on what you need to do if we have you come back at a later date, so that you're not wondering what it is that we need. You should have, as you just described, clear direction from us on what we think is insufficient. So, that being said, I think I would like to withdraw my second of your motion, Steve, with regard to tabling, and follow Roger's advice that we should continue this rather than table it, so that it doesn't need to be re-noticed, there would be a date certain. And in order to do that, we should give Mr. Cooper Doc clearance instruction on how to amend his presentation to address any concerns that we have.
Yeah, I would like to see, I'll let it go out to Mr. Cooper Doc explaining what we need, which would then bind the board, as far as I was concerned, on what needed to be supplied.
It, it seems we keep coming back to the needs are outlined in 175, 10.1. They're, they're listed in order, and it talks about who should be stamping the plans and what we require. It's right in the town ordinance.
That's one thing, okay? That's, that's fine, okay?
Twelve, twelve things that I can see right here bulleted. Some of them you have, some you don't.
The, you're talking about a land survey. So I want to understand if the town of Wolfboro is superseding state law by requiring all plans to now be stamped by a land surveyor. Is that...
There, there are many things in the town ordinance that are, go beyond state law.
This is one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. This, this whole thing is one of them. I just, I just know, I have gotten many plans approved by this board without a surveyor or engineer stamp on it. So to me, it was like, that was a remnant of a bygone era and not applicable. If that is something the board is going to require, it's going to make these things more expensive. It just is going to jack up the prices. These are expensive enough. But if that's what the board wants to do, I'm just letting you know that it's not state law, and it's going to make it more expensive, and it's going to slow the process.
Vaughn, just to be clear, you're referring to the list in 175-10.1B, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And it, it reads that, "In accordance with New Hampshire state law, the wetland boundary shall be delineated by a certified wetland scientist. The plan shall be prepared by a licensed land surveyor or professional engineer if it contains property boundaries or topography and construction details for building or erosion control, stormwater management, or proposed landscaping structures shall be designed by a professional engineer, licensed landscape architect, or certified professional in erosion and sediment control." It doesn't specifically say that it should be stamped, although I believe there is a separate law that requires that.
It would need to be stamped. The need, the plan needs to be prepared by a licensed land surveyor.
License requires a stamp. Simple enough.
That's how you certify something.
You get a stamp when you get a license.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just trying to make it clear for the public, so that they understand when they read, read these ordinances. So I, I guess to get back to your point, Mr. Cooper Doc, yes, this is in excess of what's required by New Hampshire state law.
And, okay.
I believe that's correct.
It's, it's just a change in policy, you know?
Yes, as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to do things a bit more by the book than might have been done in the past.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, so...
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
So, Peter, thanks for doing this. I, I, I feel, you know, I sense frustration here, but let's, just practical matters. This is a small lot. It's tight. You're in the wetland area.
Yeah.
Reasonable, my reasonable person...
Buffer zone, not wetland.
The wetland buffer zone. My reasonable person theory says you probably ought to have a stamp planned so that we don't get a little closer to...
Okay.
Hang on, if I can finish.
Yeah, yeah.
So that we don't get a little closer and have somebody say, "Gee whiz, they, they built it in the wrong place." We've had a couple of incarnations of that. Even though I sit on the select board, I've heard a couple of incarnations of that, okay? So we want to avoid that kind of stuff because it gets, it gets dumb.
Totally agree.
Okay, that's part one.
Totally agree.
Part two is, I have no idea on a proposed condition what the house, dimensions of the house are. That's a simple, you put them on a...
Yeah, that's easy enough to do. Yeah, fine.
And, and part three is, 175, 10.1, Roger is really good at doing this. I haven't had the benefit of reading it, but if that's in our ordinances and we haven't followed our ordinances, shame on us for not following our own ordinances.
Hmm, yeah.
And I think that what we're trying to do, at least what I hear us trying to do, and we're not trying to be punitive, it's a small lot.
Hmm, right.
It's teeny. And I, I don't mean to be disparaging of that, but a mistake on a, on a tax map has ripple effects. I, I'm strongly supportive of the idea, you want proposed conditions by an engineer. I'm strongly supportive of the fact that the neighbors asked a very valid question during our review that said, "Could they cut down all the trees?" And the answer is yes.
Hmm, yep.
We could do that. And, and, and they could. And I'm not saying that's good or bad, I'm just saying it could happen.
It could happen, yeah.
I really want to understand as a, as a person that deals with what goes on out on our public roads, because is that, any of that water coming in our direction on the public road? That's, as a select person, I would want to know a little bit about that, and I'd probably ask you when, when we get, get to see a little bit more about how this water is going to go.
Goes into the catch basin, which goes into the drainage ditch, which goes down forest road.
Well, I just want to know where the water's going to go so that we don't have somebody going, "Hey, Forest River just became, you know, Forest Lake." All right? And I'm not suggesting this would happen. But those things, to me, strike me that you, you get all of that stuff cleared out by a proposed condition. I understand the slope. I understand what we're going to do. We need to understand what we're going to do with the trees, need to understand what we're going to do with the dimensions of the house. I, I appreciate and respect the previous pathway, blockway conversation. It is going to be what it is. Absent that, I, I don't think I could answer the question to the, to a member of the public and said, "The house is six inches closer to where, where you said it was going to be." And I go, "I don't know," because we never started with survey.
Okay, well, you know, I, I would totally support and expect, like I've said many times in this discussion, a survey be required for the staking of, of the property and staking out the house. I would totally agree with that. I think it's premature at this stage until we know what we've got to work with, until you, as the planning board, set the parameters of what the building can fit in there. If it turns out a survey says the building has to be a foot narrower, then it has to be a foot narrower. It has to adhere to the 15-foot setback. You know, this is, this is my philosophy, trying to get something through at the least expense to the homeowner as possible. I am not, I am a one-person operation, okay? I don't like, you know, I don't need an office of 40 to do these things. I have connections to get all these people that you need, engineers, surveyors, I've worked with all of them. Okay, so it isn't, it's just, in my philosophy, it's, let's, let's know what they can do, then bring these people in and get it, and get it pegged and, and, you know, built according to those parameters. So I, I just, you know, it's like, which way do you want to go? You know? I can, I can, we can spend the money getting a survey done and the time, the six months that that's going to take, if that's going to be required. I'll see what I can pull off, off people to get it faster. But, you know, right now, I was hoping we'd know what we got to work with.
We, we understand your position, I think, and I...
So I need to know what else you want besides the surveyor.
Yes. So, as was mentioned, we'd like to see the dimensions of the building.
Yeah, fine, no problem. Yeah, that's easy. Yeah.
And the, and the, I, I think, more accurate location of it. And then...
More accurate location, as in what you mean by that.
There's, we see the distance from the edge of the building to the buffer, but we don't really see where it's located on the site. I'm not sure if that's...
Do you want, do you want the building staked out on site?
That would probably be helpful.
I, just, just tell me what you want. I can do it. Stake out the building? Stake out the leach field? You want me to stake out the leach field on site? I can stake out the leach field on site. Not a problem.
Peter, we're not going to give you a short list. You need to follow the ordinance.
But that's not in the...
You need to get a licensed surveyor and lay it out.
That's not in the ordinance. It's not in the ordinance that you want a building staked out. That's not something that a surveyor would necessarily do before it was approved.
I, I think, I think that, Peter, I think that the short list, as Steve just said, is that in 175, 10 dot 1B, the 12 things that are listed there, I think are the things that we...
That's the list.
That's what we would want to see.
Well, it's on the plan. It's, all those things are on the plan.
You need to, you need to spend more time with the planner's review because he's got six points there that...
Well, excuse me, the proposed removal of vegetation alteration of land service, where's the vegetation on the plan? What trees are going to go? What trees are going to be saved?
I, if, if...
Well, no, that's actually in the ordinance as a requirement. So what trees are, the vegetation alteration, I mean, what removal of vegetation?
If you want me to locate the trees, that'll be in the impact area. I can certainly do that, but it's a, it's a, it's an arduous task. I just need to know.
No, well, it's, it's in the ordinance to indicate...
Where, where is it in the ordinance?
Excuse me, the proposed removal of vegetation. The important aspect to that is if we go out on site and we check the lines and check what you're doing, and somebody cuts down a tree, was that in the plan as being removed or not? We don't know. We need to be able to go out on the site and relate the planning board decision to our codes enforcement, and right now, we can't do that. We have no idea what trees are going to stay and what is going to be removed and what your planting plan is, so we have no idea what your outcome is. So if we don't, then we can't enforce it.
I, I would think it would be, once that erosion control line is established, all the trees on the other side would be stay, and, and the ones inside could go.
Cutting under the drip line, yeah.
What's that?
If you cut under the drip line, there's a good chance you're going to end up removing those trees. I mean, you're going to cut the roots. So that, look, you don't have vegetation in what you're going to remove and alter on your plan. So it, it's pretty black and white. I'm, I'm confused over why you're asking the question. Vegetation types, you know, that, so where are the trees are going to stay and which ones are going to be removed?
Well...
That's important for us because then we know, and where is the line? We prefer that line being surveyed so we can pick it up, but the list is 12 items. Stormwater implementation plan proposed during and after construction, so you have that?
Well, you know...
Give us whip.
It's, it's all on the plan and been acceptable in the past. Now it's changing, fine. But just let, you know, it's just, it's, you know, it's in my text, the vegetation types that are there, the land form, you know, the forest that's there. It's like, I feel like I've complied with those 12 steps. You feel like I haven't. I don't know, you know, that's an impasse.
All right, so I, I would make a motion that we continue this hearing to October 7th, which is the first meeting in October at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall, and I would encourage...
Has the application been accepted?
It has not been accepted as complete yet.
So it has not been accepted?
Correct. It has not been accepted yet.
And it will not be accepted tonight?
Correct. That's correct. Well, if, if my motion passes.
Okay.
My motion hasn't passed yet.
So does that mean that butters have to be re-notified or not? They don't.
The reason I'm continuing the hearing is to avoid having to re-notify the abutters. If they are interested and have, are watching or listening or are present at this meeting, they'll know that there's been a motion made to continue a talk October 7th at 7:00 PM here in Town Hall.
But so no one else can talk tonight for or against this hearing?
We, as I said earlier, we have not accepted the application as complete, and therefore we have not opened the public hearing yet.
Okay. Just being, just being clear.
I understand.
Yep, okay.
Oh, that, that's my motion.
Go ahead, second.
Steve seconds. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to amend it to provide that a letter will be sent to Mr. Cooper Doc outlining specifically the information we're seeking.
I would second that addition.
All right, I will amend my motion as Roger has suggested. And Steve, would you like to...
Second.
He would second that again. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And you get me for the next application. Aren't you lucky? Or am I?
Now you know. All right, the next item on the agenda is Rachel Wilcox, Tax Map 19-010, 39 Brown Road, Case 2025-24, special use permit, construction of a single-family dwelling, garage, driveway, deck, and stormwater management within the wetland buffer. This is the formal submission in public hearing. Cooper Doc?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Before you go ahead.
Where have I been?
Again, we had a site visit at 6:15 this evening, at which present were Roger Murray, Paul O'Brien, Steve Webster, Peter Goodwin, and myself. And I understand that Kathy Barnard visited the site earlier this evening. Lenora Clark was also present as part of the Conservation Commission, and John Thurston was there as well as some of butters. So.
This, this property proposes to replace a house that was burned down 10, 12 years ago. Don't know the exact date. The, this is for an elderly woman to move from a house that has got a difficult entry, entrance to get into with a steep slope to a level house with a garage so that she can, one-car garage, that would be integral to the house so that she could get in out of the inclement weather. The original house is shown on the plan as an orange line, light orange line. It's one of the original chalets that were in Hidden Valley. This house was built various dates, '65, '68, '71. I believe it was one of the model homes for the Hidden Valley subdivision. And this house, proposed house, is greater setback than that original house was from the wetland. Expands, impacts into the buffer zone to some extent. We've got a request for a 10 and 1/2-foot setback from the garage, 16 and 1/2-foot setback from the building on one corner, 17 feet from another corner, 12 feet to the deck that give her some outdoor space behind the building. A septic system is also part of this application because there's no place on this property that can adhere to state or town setback requirements. I had multiple discussions with Subsurface Bureau to ensure that they would approve a septic system on this lot before I proceeded with this application. And with the stipulation that the leach field be at least 25 feet from the wetland and 50 feet from the stream, they would approve a two-bedroom septic system. That is what's outlined on the plan. Okay, there is also proposed drip line trenches on all the eaves or dry wells in case gutters are used. There is also proposed a six-foot strip be planted generally. I don't have a vegetation list. Could be provided easily. That would be adequate for that area. This lot, there's no hiding, is filled land, okay, for the most part. The wetland line, you can draw a line from one side to the other, and that's probably what the wetland once was. But that was done prior regulation and there was a house there. So there's, you know, interest in putting a house back again for someone. So there is an infiltration trench shown along the driveway so that anyone off coming to the driveway would go into the ground and not go directly into the wetland. There is interest in protecting the wetland to the extent possible. The stream shown on the plan is, starts where the stream is shown, starting on the plan. It starts there because this was filled land, and that collected the water into a channel, scoured the channel out, and connected to a stream on the next lot down slope. You could see the small building set area building that meets building setbacks on it, and this exceeds that thereby needing, that there is not enough room in that little polygon to fit a house. There is another area on, across the wetland in the back of the property that also is too small to fit a building and a much smaller septic area. That is a totally wooded area, and this proposal would be to leave that alone, and we can do anything of interest to make sure it stays as unaltered woodland, which it currently is. So the interest is to help this family who has owned this property since the Sunrise Land Corp sold it to them back in 1974, and want to continue to use it for their house. So the interest is that the area shown be accepted as a building area and everything outside of the erosion control be either planted with native vegetation or left alone to revegetate in its own. There is a proposed retaining wall around the building with the idea of, in case the grade goes up, at the site visit, the contractor for the property was there and discussed his idea of trying to level the house to road level, flatten the driveway so there isn't any slope going down to the house, and possibly getting a crawl space under the building, five-foot crawl space. That's what the retaining wall might be needed to retain the, any fill within the parameters of the building envelope. So I have some text on the plan which outlines the impact of the various, the original house and the current proposed house that was requested at the TRC.
Doug, at TRC, the issue came up of, from conservation, of if this were moved closer to the road, that would have less environmental impact. And we asked Mr. Cooper Doc to take a look at that.
Yes, and that was also discussed at the site visit earlier.
Okay, and it would need a ver hand.
That would need to go before the zoning board.
Yes.
Yeah, that was brought up as an option. Of course, it would leave the house totally out of character with the neighborhood. Having the house at 30 feet is out of character with the neighborhood already. To move it closer does two things. It makes it stand out more on the lot, being somewhat of an awkward appearance to travelers down Brown Road. Also minimizes the driveway potential for any visitors and a potential safety hazard backing out. There is shown on the plan an area that would be possibly used to turn around so you wouldn't have to back out of the, onto the road. You know, Brown Road's a pretty busy road. So it's, I think moving it closer to the road would be more of a safety hazard than a benefit to the wetland.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ryan.
And I'm not, you know, as I look at the plan, moving the house closer to the street, from what I see here, there's still, the house is still going to be sitting in a buffer area. You'd have to move the house pretty, pretty far towards the street. You'd have to then rethink what you want to do at the septic tank. I agree with you that you have a prospective, I can't back out or turn around issue. I'm not sure, and we would send the applicant off to the zoning board.
You definitely would.
There'll be, so it'll be more stuff to do there. And maybe afterwards, or maybe during this process, I'd really like to understand how, where's the benefit of moving the house closer to the street? And that would be something for a Conservation Commission that'd probably help us with here. I don't see a benefit here of moving it out.
Is it still my turn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, because you didn't say anything.
I'm sorry, yes. So Julie, I meant for you to sit for the full meeting where we were missing members before.
Okay, because we've taken turns before.
No, that's for the whole...
Thanks.
Can I add one thing to what Mr. Ryan was just saying? There was a house in this position before. This is already totally disturbed with fire. So I don't think you're going to gain any benefit by moving the house closer to the street and still having leftover dirt rubble that burned.
See, I would say, I acknowledge that we've had very dry conditions over the past several weeks, but when we were at the site visit earlier today, it appeared that the, essentially, the entire site where the house is proposed to be located was quite dry.
I think part of the, looking at this, that, and Mr. Thurston brought it up on site, that moving the garage closer to the street, not the house, but the garage would have less impact. If it were just the original footprint built and the garage wasn't added, if it was, my house had one garage, of course, but, but in this case, John was mentioning that moving the garage would do two things. It would be less impact on the site and the wetlands, and it would improve the square footage of the home. And you might recall we discussed that at TRC as well.
So just so I'm clear, since I'm having a hard time being clear on things tonight, you're talking therefore that the house would square up 33 by 31 and therefore be 16 and 1/2 feet from the wetland as opposed to having the garage 10 and 1/2 feet?
No, I'm talking about the garage sliding forward, which would be less impact to the rear of the site. And it would improve the development of the home, as simple as that.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I seem to be being challenged on all these simple statements tonight because you, I just want to understand what he's, I heard John off in the distance there. He can say something because he's right there if he wants, but I didn't quite follow him, what he was saying, because that would throw this all into the ZBA, which would, then you'd have a garage sitting in the front of a house. It, I don't know, it looks awful to me. It's just been my mind's eye. But I, you know, what, what are we, are you talking about moving the whole house forward?
No, I think they were just talking about moving the garage only.
It's still going to be 10 and 1/2 feet from the wetland.
No, I appreciate that, and I understand the intent of John's statements. I don't think that it's going to make much difference to move the garage.
I personally would not want to back out of the garage into the street.
Yeah.
It just doesn't seem like a smart thing to do.
Certainly, there's, I would say, a greater risk to safety by moving the garage closer to the street, and I don't think it makes a significant impact on reducing the impact of the wetlands. I think it's probably best to leave it where it is.
As long as we understand there's greater impact.
Yes.
Yeah.
And noting the outline of the previous home, it appears that there's, the new house would have less impact on, at least on that side, than the previous house.
Correct.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
What is the plan for excavated materials?
Offsite, all removed offsite. Yep.
One point that wasn't mentioned, that they preserved the location of the old house. So the builder pointed out the pins that were put in way back that he preserved.
Yes, he did. Yeah, a remarkable presence on his part, yes. Yes, that house location, there's two little squares with dots in the middle there that are stakes that the Scott Ducharme...
So I think that's an important point that we know where it was.
Put in the ground so we know where the house once was. Yes. It wasn't based on aerial photos or anything.
Road in two points, we can triangulate that.
Yeah, yeah. That's what those were, you know, that house was reproduced also from the dimensions shown on the tax card from, you know, the 80s, taking those two squares, two stakes that are out there. We recreated that location.
You're showing a clear boulder line here to delineate where we're not going to disturb, which is good.
My impression is that there's less concern, there's minimal concern, I think, on this application with regard to the location of the house. And without getting a variance from the zoning board of adjustment, there's probably no better place to locate the building. But I suspect that we still have concerns, as we did on the previous application, with 175-10.1b with those 12 points.
I can get, well, okay, what those points are. I can get a stamp survey plan if that's what you want, you know? You know, the idea of a property survey, you know, because this really isn't impacting any sideline setbacks from the property lines. It's only from the wetland that's of concern here. I'm just trying to, you know, save some people some money here, you know? It's like, you know, if you want a survey stamp to stamp the topography, we've done that before, okay? That's not, it's getting a survey and wondering, and having a survey stake the house out, not a problem. I think that's appropriate. I totally agree with that.
But the proposed septic system is very close to the property line.
It is. That is true. Okay, so, so, yep.
That is true.
Yep, that is true. That is true. It is at the 10-foot setback both ways. You know, these property lines are based on my location of iron pipes all up and down Brown Road. And I've been all over that area. I've done multiple applications to this board on that road. So I, you know, there's a lot of, you know, evidence behind it, but I'm not a surveyor, okay? You know, I just, you know, and I don't play one on TV. You know, so I'm confident in my abilities, but if you want, if you insist on having a survey, surveyor, survey the property lines, just let me know.
I think, as you've said, it's unnecessary, certainly, I would say, to survey the rear side of the property. But perhaps, as was raised just a moment ago, there is concern about the front side of the property specifically with regard to the proximity to the leach field.
We can certainly, and the butter next door may have already done that. I saw it since I was out there, some stakes on that line. I don't know what they actually mean, but it may already be done.
You may be able to piggyback off that.
Right, right, yes. But, you know, once again, I just, I just, you know, want your help in clarifying what you want to see on here so it can be approved.
I think we need a plan prepared by a surveyor, as it says in Section 10.1. And we need the information in 10.1 because we don't have the authority to waive it whether we think it's a good idea or a bad idea.
Oh, come on. Come on, Roger. You're like, you've got all that kind of skill. You could do anything, you know? I have total confidence in you.
That's what we're trying to fix.
You're trying to fix my abilities.
Yes, okay. So, okay, well, you know, I'm just letting you know, it's going to be the same plan because I just, you know, I, people know my quality of work, and, you know, surveyors don't have a problem with my, my quality of work because I learned at White Mountain Survey back when it was good. Well, it was always good, you know? So, you know, if you want a stamp, a survey stamp on this plan... So, you know, if you want a stamp, a survey stamp on this plan, it will be done. Do you want it now, before you can approve, or do you want it as a condition of approval?
I think what we're looking for is to have that information before we accept the application as complete.
Oh, you're being hard-ass today, aren't you? Yes. Holy cow, Jesus.
As I said, we're trying to follow.
Where's the freedom gone? Yes.
Trying to follow the rules, so. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, you've got the left-hand dimension of the house, and you've got the rear dimension, but I would like the total front dimension, the boundary around the garage dimensions.
Sure. Anything you want, Roger.
I think that some of the issues that we're dealing with in these particular two properties is that the, that there are things, septic systems, very, very close to boundary lines.
Mm-hmm.
And if it says approximate, where does it really mean?
Yeah, I can't say anything else.
And so, and so if this was something where there was 100 yards between something and the property line, it's probably okay. But this is really a situation where you're delineating that it's a certain setback from a property line, but you don't know where the property line is. And so, I think that's a problem.
Well, I, well, maybe I have an overinflated opinion of my skills, but I, I feel like they're, they're there, but I, I can't, I have to say approximate, because I'm not a surveyor. Yep. This is a light entertainment.
He's listening to Pink Floyd.
Yeah, I don't blame him. Yep.
I don't need to interrupt.
Okay, so, if that is the, well, before I get, you know, compliance with this and then come back and get other requests, the six-foot vegetated strip came up on the last application, I would be remiss to not make sure that there's interest in having a little more planting detail on the plan when I come back. Is that a reasonable supposition on my part?
It is.
Yes. Okay.
All right, so I would make a motion to continue this hearing. I'm sorry.
Just quickly, I think the, the item 10 in your list, proposed removal of vegetation is a crucial one, because as you build a septic system and other things like that, what's getting cut down as a result of that? And so, we understand what the limits of, as it were, the construction limit line, and we don't know what's getting cut down, what's getting preserved.
Okay, I, I have a big question about that one, because that's not anywhere.
Item 10, proposed removal of vegetation and alteration to land service.
Right. But that's not in the, in the wetland buffer. So, how does that apply to this application?
That's not, the grading isn't entering into the wetland buffer?
There's a, there's a little bit, if, you know, okay, so I can see that. I just want to be clear on how, how, how far you're going with this, this desire.
I don't know, I mean, proposed removal of vegetation and alteration to land service, so.
Yeah, well, obviously.
You've got topoes showing the existing grade, you don't have topo, do you have topoes showing the proposed grade?
Yes, I do, and, and, but, you know, it's like, I got an erosion control line there. That, that's an extent of removal of vegetation, I would think.
So, everything from the street up to the erosion control line is being cut? There's no trees being preserved at all, and?
The option is there, yes. If, if you want.
In the administration of this, in codes, I can't deal with options, I got to deal with a plan. So, our goal is to respect the work of the planning board by making sure it goes in the ground as per the plan. So, if we don't have a decent plan, we can't respect that work.
Well, you know, I, I, excuse me, I think it's a decent plan, but, you know, I also want to know if you're extending your jurisdiction of that beyond the wetland, the buffer zone area.
No, I would expect that if it's outside the buffer, then you're free to cut trees as you like.
I, I have always understood it that way. So, you know, I'm hearing that he wants to know everything that could be disturbed based on this 10.1.
No, no, I, I told you that I need a removal, where are, where is the plan, proposed removal of vegetation? Where is it? And whether it's in the buffer or out of, you're working in the buffer in your septic system and in your home. So, those two things will remove vegetation.
Yes.
What's going to stay is sensibly what we're looking for.
Well, I am not anticipating that anything would likely stay inside that. That's why it's a, we're asking for that area to work with.
Let's put on the plan that you're going to clear cut to the buffer line.
Well, there's no trees there, it's all just.
But as we saw on the view, there's, it's a pile of sand, there isn't anything there.
There isn't anything there, right.
Except apparently some ground hornets.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's, there was a great milkweed stand there beginning of the season, I don't know where they went. Okay, so, you know, it just.
But what Bill's observing on the piece of paper we're looking at, is the proposed leach field does have some buffer erosion.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so what he's observing and going to, you know, the, the ordinance is, he wants to know whether that's going to be taken away. You're saying, ain't nothing there in the first place, so I ain't taking anything away.
Pretty much, yeah.
Okay, so.
We just want to state that.
He's correct, you're correct, all right. But I think what, what we're trying to make sure we do is when we see these little, you know, these little sideways red lines, you know, we have to go look at what we have on the books and say, are you playing with the rules, or are you not playing with the rules? That's all. Simple.
I'm, I'm a play with, with the rules kind of guy.
All right.
So, I will revisit these sites, I will get you your stamps, and see you in a month.
Well, no, before we go.
Oh, no, I got more. Oh, how exciting. Oh, wait, just more, yes.
As I was trying to do earlier, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing.
Ah, yes.
To October 7th at 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall, at which point we will take this up again, and it's our expectation that you will address the points that we just described.
As best as I can.
So, that's my motion.
To my greatest.
Paul seconds it?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you, Peter.
Okay. Always a pleasure.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Aaron Michaud, Tax Map 204-056, 83 Center Street, Case 2025-25, Site Plan Review for Change of Use, Formal Submission, Public Hearing.
Doug?
Hi there.
I'd like to recuse myself, since I have my business across the street.
All right, so Julie has recused herself, so we would.
My turn's over.
We would appoint somebody in her place. I'm not sure whose turn it is.
Thank you, Jane.
It's Kathy's turn. All right, Kathy, will you sit?
Oh, okay.
Very good, thank you. All right.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Sarah Morgan. My partner and I, Aaron, are looking at purchasing 83 Center Street. We're here for our site plan review and change of use for the building. It's currently vacant, but has been used as office retail space. It's in the limited business district, and we are trying to change it into a carryout, takeout bakery.
Very good.
We've gone through TRC. I think I've nicked all the boxes, unless I'm missing anything.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to go over what I've written, I can do that.
I'm sorry, Bill?
If you want me to go over what I've written, I can do that.
Sure, that would be helpful, thank you.
So, the, the primary issue is making sure that we mark the parking spaces between the two lots, to, to make sure that cars from your business aren't parking. There's a residence across the parking lot from you, and I think there was a concern about that. To try to put up signage to make people aware that there's a public parking lot down the street, if it looks like you're getting congested. Avoid blocking, from a visibility perspective, anything back toward the bridge. If you pull out from that space and there's sandwich board signs and everything else, and you have a little car, it's going to be hard to see oncoming traffic. I think, so the biggest issue, and then also, on an open curb cut like that, there's a tendency that people will come in the curb cut at any point and try to avoid other cars. So, an arrow in, an arrow out is going to help you from those sort of circumstances, where two people are trying to come out of the same curb cut, and one person is trying to come in, so that you get appropriate stacking. So, I think it's more the parking spaces and trying to work with your neighbor to make sure that there isn't your people parking in their spaces, and vice versa.
Yep.
Your parking spaces in the back, I think, should be a little bigger on the plan. I think they're a little small, but it's possible that you can fit them all. We talked about you need eight for this project, so.
Yep.
And you have an ADA space that works, I think, but just make sure that they're aware they shouldn't park toward the building with their door to offload, something like that. A signage would, would help you there. Last thing is, there's a light in the back that might be owned by the MED, so you want to check with them on whether you continue that and replace it, you know, with your light.
Yep, so I've already spoke with Barry. So, during the TRC meeting, those were the few things that were brought up. So, one was speaking with Barry Mukio about getting that removed. I've already spoke to him about that, so obviously, we can't do anything about it now, because we don't own the building yet, so we can't have it removed. The other thing was the electric department, and we, yeah, so we've worked on all of that with Barry and the lighting, yep.
I mean, your, your traffic is quicker in and out than a restaurant, so you have the ability possibly to serve it with the spaces, but you want to make sure that in a quick in and out type of situation, people tend to look for whatever spaces are open, and that might end up to be your neighbors. So, marking each side appropriately, parking for, and then working with the neighbors, say, parking for, striping the spaces, make sure there's some sort of access to the rest, and, and working with somebody that would be able to give you more information than sort of my verbal direction, you know, somebody that could strip it and maximize the number of parking spaces for you. That's all I had.
Would you care to speak to the waivers that you've requested?
The waiver that I requested? Can you remind me of the waiver that I requested?
We have a site plan review waiver form here dated July 28th, which lists 1, 2, 3, 4, well, there's a whole long list of things that you've waived, and unfortunately, it doesn't list what the individual sections are, and I don't have in front of me. It's 173 15E, 1DE, 2, 3, 4, D through, well, there's, I don't know, 15 of them there?
Is that, is that on the review? Because I haven't, I haven't seen a copy of the review. If you have it, can I look at it?
It's on your form.
Okay. Hi, this is Leanne Hendrickson. I'm just helping the applicant along with this, because she doesn't have an agent representation. So, she's just requesting a waiver from the applicable sections of that, of that section. She, she doesn't have an agent, she doesn't have a surveyor, she's using a, a plan that was in the, the file, and she's, it's not to scale, there's certain, there's certain things on the plan that are required, so she's manipulated it, and she just would like a waiver from the requirements. It's not done by an architecture, it's not an architect, rather. There's no exterior changes to the building, all the, all the changes are to the interior of the building, there's no changes to the site, so that's why it was requested. So, the board made a similar approval. I understand that now things are changing moving forward, but the board just did this for the gazebo down at Clark Plaza for P and D Zimmerman Family Limited Partnership, because it was a minor, minor site plan review. So, we were hoping that the board would grant these waivers as well.
I think you're asking for more waivers than you actually need, because some of the information is supplied, I believe.
It, it could be. We weren't quite sure all of the ones that were.
And I have one question after G. Is that J? You're asking to waive, or is it?
Is it an I?
I think it's an I.
Or?
Where are you, Roger?
Or J, or for L?
I, L.
I think it's a J. I hope it's a J.
I'd have to look at what the zoning is, to be honest with you. I don't have the zoning section in front of me.
Roger, whatever you want it to be, it'll be.
No, I want, I just want to know whether you're asking for, I believe you're asking to waive for OJ.
Looks like J.
Which is the location of all municipal, non-municipal utilities and appurtenances.
Yeah, that would be.
But if it's I, that is the location and layout of all onsite parking loading facilities?
No, it's J.
It's not that.
It's J, because we, we have every intention, or she has every intention of doing the onsite loading. She already has. So, it's, it's definitely J. And the proposed project is permitted within the zoning district. There are no, like I said, proposed changes to the exterior building or the site, and that's the rationale for the waiver request.
Can we get a plan that, I, the two handicap parking spaces, I believe, are going to become one, and it's going to be parallel to the building?
Correct. So, she had a meeting with Joel Fedorowicz and the town planner, and the plan was going to be revised following that meeting. However, it didn't get revised. So, we'll just wait for the condition, we'll wait for the notice of decision, the plan will get revised if it gets approved. We're being presumptuous, apparently. If it gets approved, we'll wait for the notice of decision, the plan will be revised accordingly, and there will be one handicap.
Well, I think we need to make a conditional approval, which is then final, once the plan is revised. That's going to be a revision of this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, correct.
I'll make a motion that we grant the requested waivers.
Can you second?
Further discussion?
Yep. I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
All right, the waivers are granted, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the application as complete.
Second.
Seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Will open the public hearing? Would anybody from the public like to speak to this?
I have, my neighbors would like to, well, new neighbors.
Please let them speak.
Let them do it.
Hi, my name's John Lovering, and we are the abutters that own the building that share the parking area. And I spoke with her earlier today, and we addressed all the concerns that we might have, and she's going to add some signage that would direct people not to pack on our side of things, but it's, it's common that we're going to be, whoever's going in and out of there, either it's us, our tenant, or theirs, it's going to be shared on that entryway, because it's just the way it's going to work out. We've talked about plowing, snow removal, and stuff like that. So, I'm all in favor of what she's doing.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the board? All right, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, there's, there's suggestion, conditions in the plan of review.
You order, shall I?
Call here, the chair.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the change of use as discussed with the conditions as outlined in the planner review, which I'm not, there's 12 points here, I, hopefully I don't need to read all of that, but we'll certainly include it in the notice of decision.
Number nine, it says the special use permit.
I don't think that's correct.
Correct, it is not.
All right, so we'll remove point nine regarding the validity of the special use permit.
Kathy, did you just second that?
Yes, I did.
I'm sorry, Kathy?
I seconded.
Kathy seconds it. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Got your approval.
Coffee and dough, another place to buy coffee.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the Wolfboro Area Children's Center Tax Map 218-89, 180 South Main Street, case 2025-26, site plan review for parking reconfiguration. This is the formal submission in public hearing.
Are you stepping down, Steve? No, Steve. Stepping down.
Are you going to step down? Children's Center?
Are you on the board?
No, yeah.
All right, we, Julie, would you, oh, I'm sorry, we'll go to Jane. You want to sit in this one, Jane? All right, thank you.
Randy, can you put the plan so interested people in the audience can see it as well?
Yeah, where would be the best place, you think?
Just put it to the side facing this way, sort of, I guess.
There you go.
That'll do.
It was upside down. Much better.
Good evening. My name is Randy Tetrow, licensed land surveyor with Norway Plains Associates, here to represent the Wolfboro Children's Center. And I'm here with the executive director, Teriann Cox, who's in the audience. Should there be any questions relating to the nature and function of the center that I won't be able to answer. This, this application has gone before the TRC, I think it was August 13th, and had department had feedback on that. And since then, we have submitted plans with a couple amendment, a couple revisions on them, not many, you have the revised plans based on the comments from the TRC. This, this proposal is a minor site review and it's a parking lot reconfiguration plan. You guys are pretty, the board's pretty familiar with the site because we came before the board a couple of months ago with a minor lot line adjustment, the pavement encroachment, which would be on the north side of the children's center property. So you guys all familiar with that and where it sits and all that? So the, the minor site, site plan review for that configuration is for a small section that's located in the shaded area in the, partially in the area that they did the lot line adjustment on. The reason for this is twofold. One is to try to get as many spaces as, additional spaces as they can because of the nature and function of the center and the in and out, you know, aspect of it. As many spaces as they can have at one time serves the center better. It's in the village residential district, but it's in the ROI overlay zone, which means in the residence office institutional, so it's permitted use. The parking law, I have requested a waiver for the parking because there's a requirement of 150% of the requirement. So if you look at the parking stats on there, for that size building, you'd need 30 spaces. So there's also a maximum of 45. Why, I'm not 100% sure, but that's what's in there. So they already have, I believe, 54, two are ADA. So they're already over that requirement, but they do need additional spots. Not only additional spots, when I say twofold, if you look at the, the drone flight imagery, you can see the old parking lot underneath it and you can see the new proposed parking area over the top of it. So that gives you a good idea of how that area would change. That area would actually lose two or three spaces at the eastern end because of the wetland buffer. There's 50-foot setback along with the 25-foot wetland buffer that, so we took a couple out on that side, but we were able to additionally put some in the center of the back parking lot and a couple on either edge as described in my narrative. So what that allowed us to do is not only give, give them the extra spaces, which I believe it's about a net plus 15, if you look, if you look at the design, so that would be a total of 69, three ADA. And what it does is it opens up the aisle widths. The aisle widths were, you know, within 15, 17 feet, sometimes smaller going through there originally. So this allows us, if you look at the plan, if you can read it, the small ones, it allows us to get up to 20, 22 feet in a lot of places. So it allows for a two-way traffic flow around what would be the backside of the parking lot. So you can see the arrows. So originally, those, those traveled ways were much smaller and people had to turn around and so forth without being able to go all the way around. The school bus drop offs are at the crosswalk just north of the site and they go down the crosswalk and come back in. The smaller buses do pull in right here and offload. So they'll be able to go around the whole thing now without having to back up and turn around. So, so that was one feature. We also provided some, a crosswalk down, right across from the main entrance to the parking lot. We also added a couple of parallel spaces, which they feel will function real well for certain uses for the center, about six spaces in there. So we picked up a few in there, we picked up some in the middle, we lost a couple over here because, again, because you can see the wetland setback and buffer. So most of, most of the reconfiguration had to do with that requirement. We, it's about a 5,000 square foot additional impervious. We got a 70% coverage, we're not even close to the coverage. We're not over the 10,000 square feet for the stormwater management, although we did provide for a grass swale and a plunge pool that should sheet flow into and take care of any of the stormwater parts of that. There's a detailed sheet with construction sequencing and maintenance and details on how that gets constructed. The rest of the property is already vegetated and tree lined, so we're not proposing any additional landscaping in this area. Similarly, the lighting, as discussed at the TRC, is existing. The only pole that has any kind of, we believe, town functions is overhead wires to the first pole that lights this area up. And the conversations with Barry, he said they can maintain that. If they ever take it out, they may not be able to put it back, but they can keep that the way it is. So the rest, there's a light pole out back, there's additional lighting along the building and the shed garage in the back. So we'd like to keep the lighting as it is. There was some discussion at the TRC about if, if they have issues with it being too dark in the future, which it doesn't appear to be if you go there at night, then they, they would be able to lay a conduit during construction and then they could patch into that and put some post lamp if it, if it becomes necessary. But it doesn't appear to be required here, so we're not proposing any additional lighting for, for just this thing. Let's see if I can think of anything else. Again, it's on water and sewer, so there's no issues, well and septic. As far as a SWIP goes, it's not over an acre, so it doesn't require a SWIP. Some of the contractors do them anyway. But there shouldn't be more, it's under 10,000 square foot disturbance, 5,000 of additional impervious. So it meets all those requirements. I've tried to list as much of that as I could on the sheet. The sheet shows the topography in the wetlands, there's wetland stamps, surveyor stamps, and I can add an engineering stamp to this because engineer did design it, Hillary designed it. Usually don't put it on until final submission. So it's kind of a minor engineering design, but it still is. So this plan is, in my opinion, kind of shows exactly what it looked like before. And you can see, if anybody remembers the lot line adjustment, the existing pavement was over the line just slightly. So you can, now that they have this, it allows for a much better configuration, we feel, with that. And we tried to do the best we could to attenuate, as they tell me, the stormwater flow into this plunge pool design. And there's a description of what it does, it basically traps the sediment, slows down the stormwater and, and it allows it to infiltrate at some degree and then any extra goes in the same direction it's going now. It's a widely wooded, brambled area out in there that runs all the way down towards Dunkin' Donuts, if you kind of get an idea where you are. So, so the really fairly basic design for this, again, if there's, I got to speak to the waiver, really the reason for that is mostly the, the nature and function of the business. And most of the parkings out in the back are on the side, so it doesn't show. And I'm not 100% sure, it was discussed at the TRC, what the max requirement was, it may be because they, the board wanted to get a handle on big parking lots in the front of the building or parking lots that were bigger than what was needed, you know, like Rochester Walmart or something. But that's the only thing I can think of. So again, we're adding 15 spaces to the existing, we tried to get a little more, but that's all that we could do and still have those, you know, two-way entry and exit avenues.
Snow removal?
And snow removal, I think it shows on there, Peter, on one of the plans. Most of the snow removal takes place over in this area of the, over in this area of the site. See if I can get on there. Yeah, so over in this area of the site is where we list the snow removal. I talked to Teriann about that and they push all of it this way and out back because a lot of this doesn't get used in the winter. And anything, if it gets too bad, they get trucked away. We usually have a standard note that says that on the plan. If not, we can certainly make sure that's on there. So any other questions?
Hi, Randy, how you doing?
Good.
Thanks for this. Could you just walk me back? I wasn't paying enough attention. Where does MED's utility poles come in?
Okay, so.
You got, is it three of them you have coming in?
No, there's, there's one overhead pole located just to the north of the entrance has a light on it.
Yep.
And then there's an overhead wire that runs through utility pole right about at the front of the building on the property line between Brewster and, and the children's center.
Is that illuminated? There's a, there's a light on that?
There's a light that shines this area up, right in that area. And then there's lights on the building all the way in this.
That's your, that's, that's the children's center?
That's the children's center.
Municipal electric is?
There's only one pole, the first pole.
And did you, did you say you were thinking about, or you were gonna put a conduit in the ground for lighting?
Well, it was discussed.
You're thinking about it, or you were gonna put a conduit?
Yeah. So we didn't, it didn't show in on the plan because it came up at the TRC and we didn't decide one way or another, but the tentative discussion of the plan was to, was to run it along the EP edge so that if they, they witnessed a, a problem in the winter or whatever, but then, so far, they have not.
Well, trees grow up.
Yeah, trees grow up and, but all the lighting is coming from the developed area. So if it's the board's preference, and actually, it was something that Bill suggested at the TRC, so that could be done during construction and then if they need to do it, like I said, Barry said that can stay similarly to some of the other applications we've had in front of the board, as long as it doesn't, once it gets taken away, he doesn't want to have anymore. So that was the discussion on that. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Oh, it does. Thank you.
I want to have a comment, Randy. We talked about some kind of signage so they wouldn't plow snow into the plunge pool.
Oh, yes, okay.
Did you add that?
Yeah, I certainly can add that. Sometimes, as, again, other applications have come before the board, there were comments about, one of them was the church up on 28, where they said they don't want to push the snow in there and then the engineer said, well, that might not be a bad idea because then that goes into the, you know, that traps a lot of the sediment right in the plunge pool. So we can do that either way, and I can ask Hillary about that if that's, you know, an overburdening of that.
You know better than I, it just was brought up.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been discussed both ways. A lot of times, people do like to push the snow in the grass swales because then the salt or sand gets caught in there. But in the winter, when it freezes, that obviously doesn't happen. So as mentioned earlier tonight, so, you know, we can certainly put a sign up there for snow storage if that's the board's preference.
Either way. You just confused me, Randy. Did you say it's okay to put snow in there or not okay to put snow in there?
Yeah, let's see, normally, it's, it's fine. It depends on how big it is, Julie, you know, how big the area is. This is a pretty small one, so I think what Steve's suggesting is, is being that small may plug it right up, you know? Some of the bigger drainage areas, like I was up at the church, then has time for the snow to melt in there and then it's going to go into the treatment system anyway, that's where you want it. Instead of getting hauled away and dumped, we don't know where.
It's a pond down there.
Yeah.
Having survived two children going here.
Yeah.
I would just say.
No, it's not really a pond, it's a small, it's called, it's a plunge pool.
The whole thing was a pond.
Yeah, yeah.
And I want to say whoever moved the refuse shed, that's brilliant.
Okay, yeah, I knew you'd bring that up. Okay, so the, yeah.
So the kids aren't going to be plunging into the pool.
Follow the bouncing shed. What was that?
It's not a plunge pool for the kids.
It's a plunge pool, so it's a rock line plunge pool. So the sheet drainage comes down, goes down into it, you know, yeah.
I understand.
It's not like your normal detention pond that you guys are kind of, as far as the shed.
I think Steve's point was that it wasn't a place for the kids to play.
No, no, yeah, yeah, no.
No, they're on the other side of the fence.
Yeah, yeah, and the kid, you know, so it is on the opposite side of where all that happens, you know, so. So was there a question about the shed?
No, it's a brilliant move.
Okay, yeah.
It's accessible for both sides, it's fenced right through in the middle, it's great.
Yeah, and so unfortunately, we moved it once and now it's going to have to be relocated with this new pocket design. We're showing it to be relocated over in this area. They like to keep it as close to the building because of its function that we went over before, so, but the parking is more important at this stage.
Is the traffic flow to the back of the lot going to be through between, by the maintenance garage?
Say that again, Roger. Say that again, Roger.
If you come down, are you gonna make a right turn toward the maintenance garage to go back?
Right in here?
Yeah, I can't see where you're pointing exactly, but...
So it should be, you can see the distances on here.
Through here.
Right, but they can come down and go through like that, or they can come down and go through like that?
It's gonna be through there in front of the maintenance garage.
Yes, in front of the maintenance garage.
I would say not through the garage, but adjacent to it.
Yes. And that's kind of how they do it now, it's just skinnier, you know? Yep. And if you notice, to his, to Roger's point, we've got two spaces right on the side of the maintenance garage. We needed as many as we could get, so if for some reason they need to get in that side of the garage, then they're gonna cone it off for the time being, and then they're gonna lift them. That's how much they need the spaces.
Any other questions from the board?
Have you seen the planner review?
Nope.
We talked about it.
But we did talk about it verbally, and I was at the TRC, but I haven't got a paper, if that's what you're asking.
If I may, I can go through it quickly. Most of it is actually questions which, uh, Randy already answered, that the plunge pool is fed by sheet flow. I thought there was a potential inlet there.
No.
The possibility exists that we look at additional signage.
Bill, could you bring the mic a little closer to you?
Sure. Uh, look at additional signage there. If you look at the planner's report, there's a Google Street View, and there's a little guy with a flag, and then a speed bump, maybe something slow children at play to clearly indicate, you know, that they're going back there. If the spaces that are parallel to the building are gonna be used for bus, and the bus is pointing in, just make sure the bus can make it around the back of the parking lot. If the buses aren't going in, then that's not a problem. Uh, if you know the spaces along the side of the sidewalk, there are parallel spaces there. Uh, and that was about it, showed the inlet, and then there's a basin up near the maintenance garage, just make sure that that basin, uh, usually basins proxemic to a maintenance garage are somewhat problematic, so just make sure we're dealing with a basin that isn't, you know, taking some of the drainage or whatever else out of the barn, what is its purpose and things like that, because it's up gradient of the parking lot.
Yeah.
Doesn't look like it would collect water. So, I, I mean, uh, hell, one more thing is, there's a strip between Brewster and the parking lot, what material does the engineer suggest or the surveyor suggest, uh, that works best for the drainage purposes?
Is that me? Okay, as far as the little catch basin there, it's not your standard looking catch basin, it's a little grate which I think is tied into roof drainage, and it's a leaching little area, it's not hooked to any other catch basin drainage. So, and as Bill says, it's up slope of this, so it shouldn't matter. As far as the area between the parking lot and the Brewster property line, that's gonna be a grass swale. It'll probably be crushed and, you know, uh, stone along the edge of the parking lot with a little, um, shoulder, you know, a little small shoulder, and then it'll be a grass swale is what we want to have running down to the plunge pool. They just handed me a little paper that kind of shows what it looks like with the, with the little sign and, uh, little crosswalk where it is now. So unless there's something more, see that little?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so, um, but certainly, that's why we added the crosswalk that wasn't there before. And what was one of the other things? The catch basin?
Uh, the basin, the inlet, you've already explained, uh...
Sheet flow, yeah, the sheet flow, and that's...
That's pretty straightforward.
In this particular case, there's no reason for anything else in that small area, so we haven't designed any, any kind of, you know, structure drainage is not needed in that area.
And you had mentioned today that the buses would come up front?
Yeah, which I didn't know, and I talked to you for sure.
Yeah.
But evidently, how, uh, according to Terri Ann, and you can ask Terri Ann any questions about that, because I don't know him as well, but supposedly the bus comes out, and there's a crosswalk here, kids get out, and they come down, they come in the building. The smaller buses, the smaller ones for, uh, can come in here and unload, and they used to kind of turn around down here the best they could, now they should be able to come all the way through, the, the smaller ones. So that should work out fine with the way we've got it. As far as the parallel spaces, we didn't really designate them for anything particular other than probably people that are not staying long and parked there, that are in and out more, you know? That's was the rationale for putting them there, plus, um, because we widened it, we had room to put them there. And I think that was really it.
Any other questions from the board? Randy, would you like to speak to the waiver?
Sure. Yeah, let me get it out here. I, I think I might have paraphrased it already, which is mostly just... Let me get it here.
I, I think he really did say...
Okay, yeah, so it's, um, section 173 dash 20.2D, requiring that the maximum number of parking spaces shall not exceed 150% of the minimum spaces required as per the table section 17536. So 30, 150%, 45. Like I said, they're already over that. It's permitted use in this zone. Really, the only respectfully requested reason for the, uh, for the waiver is the nature and function of the, of the center. They, they already are experiencing, you know, uh, a, a lack of number of spaces, so any additional ones that they could come up with that can be restriped and used, um, is favorable to them. But I can certainly, if you want to hear from Terri Ann, I certainly can have her speak, as far as that goes, it's just relayed to me that that's the need.
I will make a motion, we grant the waiver.
I'll second that motion. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the waiver's granted. I'll make a motion to accept this application as complete. All seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, thank you. We'll open this up to a public hearing, or a public comment, rather. Would anybody from the public like to speak to this? Hearing none and seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing, public comments. Any further discussion from the board? All right, would somebody like to make a motion? All right, I'll do it then. I'll make a motion to approve the, approve the parking reconfiguration site plan review with the conditions as previously described and with, uh, as listed in the planner review, that, uh, snow storage shall be removed and stored such that drainage structures can function properly. Uh, the applicant will work with the municipal electric department to determine the continued use or removal of the light near the parking entrance. Lighting shall be replaced with dark sky alternatives if necessary. Uh, it's recommended that the parking spaces in the ADA space shall be striped and signed as applicable, meeting any and all applicable codes. Uh, the signage to enhance the safety for children at play should be considered in the applicable areas and without possibility of being blocked by a parked vehicle. Uh, the inlet to the plunge pool will be documented to downgrade condition from the parking lot.
Did we address that?
Yeah, if you would, please.
Did we address...
The inlet to the plunge pool.
Yeah, so the inlet to the plunge pool is just the, the rocks and sheet flow onto them. There's no defined, there's no defined inlet, it's that whole face of that area, including the grass swale.
So we should remove that condition?
Yeah, I don't think it's needed, but that's up to you.
Well, the, the next condition I was gonna read was that stacking of snow between the parking area and the inlet to the pun, plunge pool would be considered as a violation.
Yeah, and if there needs to be signage there, it's fine. It can be a condition, yeah.
And then there are the typical conditions with regard to, uh, permit application, final drawings, and such, which I expect our planner will include in the final decision. All right, that's my motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, thank you. Uh, yes, we can use findings of fact, thank you, Peter.
I needed that one for the last one.
Yes, you're right. Uh, with regard to findings of fact, uh, this, I would say that this makes the best use of the property without undue burden, uh, especially with regard to the parking, uh, improves the safety of the operations of the children's center with the revised circulation.
Period.
Sorry?
Period.
Period, there you go. All right, the next item on the agenda is David Flint, Tax Map 182-002, Governor Wentworth Highway Case 2025-27, three lot subdivisions, formal submission and public hearing.
My name is Brian Berlin. I am a licensed land surveyor and licensed septic designer, and currently employed by Horizons Engineering out of the Osseby office. With me is David Flint, the landowner and applicant. Mr. Flint owns land on the government, Governor Wentworth Highway, known as Tax Map 182-2. It is a 21.4 acre tract of land with just over 600 feet of road frontage on the north side of Route 109, also known as Governor Wentworth Highway. Uh, Lake Wentworth is maybe a third of a mile or so to the west of that property, and on the other side of the road. The lot is in two zones. The first zone is the residential rural zone, which backs up from Route 109 to this line right here. So that is a zoning line. It happens to coincide with the proposed rear of Lot 1. So all of the frontages are in that rural residential zone, and the rear is the rural agricultural zone. Lot 1 is the smallest one, being 3.0 acres shown there in green. It has 200 feet of frontage on 109, and it has been test pitted twice, it just got test pitted again this previous weekend, uh, so this plan reflects that new test pit and a new 4K area shown right here. And in years past, I had dug another test pit, um, here and here on Lot 1, and they were all suitable test pits. Lot 2 is shown in purple. It is a five acre tract of land, also test pitted from a few years back, and because it's five acres, it does not require state subdivision approval. And lastly is Lot 3 being the remainder, uh, shown there in blue. I didn't mention it, but both 2 and 3 also have just 200 feet of frontage, and that one foot to spare is split up amongst them. So lots 2 and 3, due to their size, do not need state subdivision approval. All lots meet the Wolfboro form factor, Lot 3 being the most challenged, and it worked out around 26, where 35 is the, the maximum. The lots will share a single driveway system, poorly shown in orange. Uh, Wolfboro does allow three lots per driveway, and Lot 1 will be serviced quickly by taking a quick left. Lot 2 would be serviced this way, and the right of way doesn't, it isn't a right of way for Lot 3 since they own the land, but that road would just continue, and this is all an existing roadway, but has been rather treed over the years, but, uh, it's still out there. And we have received, um, DOT approval for that driveway, which we'll submit tonight. Just like the consultants before me, Peter Cooper Dark and Randy Tatro, we've been doing this a long time. Uh, we've seen many, many planner reviews, they put panic in my blood, and I have not yet seen this planner review, so I'm hoping there's not too many surprises. We are requesting a waiver as to the source of soils information. Um, I'll address that now if you'd like. The ordinance is actually the ordinance of 174-9B, which asks for either HIST mapping, or I think they call it Order 1 mapping, by a certified soil scientist. Uh, we are requesting a waiver to that source and allow us to use the USDA NRCS Web Soils, which is a, um, very excellent source of soils that has evolved over the years. It is a, um, source that was not available when the ordinance was written. The lots are all Ampli size, they're well above the minimum lot size based on soil type. That computation is shown right here. The smallest lot, Lot 1, when you do the weighted average based on soil types, works out to be 2.0 lot, so this is twice the size of a minimum lot based on soil type. I didn't do it, well, I did do it for Lot 5. Lot 5 is six point, excuse me, Lot 2 is 6.9 lots, and the remainder is 10.5 lots based on soil type. And they're both way over the, um, other than Lot 1 being the three acre minimum, um, they all meet that. The best I'm hoping for tonight is, one, um, accept the application as complete along with the waiver, and two, get a conditional approval conditioned on, one, setting the corner pins, and two, getting the final DES subdivision approval only for Lot 1. And with that, I will take any questions.
I have a question. I'm a little independent, I kind of like my own driveway. Why have you chosen to have Lot Number 1 and Lot Number 2 both need to go uphill and downhill to get in and out of the other driveway, rather than having their own driveways?
DOT rules only allowed one driveway on this lot, as it stands.
As it stands, yes. Well, once it is broken into three lots, could Lot Number 1 get their own driveway?
Lot 1 will share in that orange corridor of driveways. It'll be a curb cut serving three lots.
My question is, could they choose to have their own driveway later?
No, DOT will not let them. And that's based on a history since 1971. We have to look at what these lots looked like in 1971, where they all had three lots in 71. Then as they get subdivided and driveways get taken away, this ended up with a single remaining driveway. And getting into a little more detail on that driveway, there is a 15-inch culvert proposed there, all approved by DOT. We would love to have three driveways there, but DOT will not allow it.
I was just looking at the elevations, and I can see it being iced up pretty good, trying to get up the hill, then trying to make your corner, and still try to make the driveway to your house. It might make a really long night trying to get up there.
I can say that the ordinance asked for a 30-foot wide driveway easement, that is a 40-foot... That is a 40-foot. It will be professionally constructed, replaced. There's a driveway there already and this will be improved.
Question? Is the driveway, I see existing gravel. Are you improving it? Are you paving those driveways?
That would be up to Mr. Flint to decide, but...
If you could come up to the microphone.
Yeah, I go up to the microphones of the public and hear you.
I think my initial intent would be to pave from the roadway up maybe 20 feet or something like that as an apron.
Just an apron and the rest would be gravel?
But I still would consider paving the whole area, all the driveways. I haven't looked into the cost of that, so that's a determining factor.
My second question is, I wasn't, I'm a rookie coming back to this. You're asking for the ability to use Websoils. Help me understand that, the Websoil side versus some other soil analysis that you want to do?
Well, I was trying to save my client a little bit of money from hiring a certified soil scientist that has been mapped by a certified wetlands scientist. So in combination of that professional wetlands mapping and the NRCS Websoils, I think you're getting some pretty good data to base lot line sizing, or lot sizing from soils. And the smallest lot ended up being the equivalent of two lots.
Okay. And we have experience with the Websoils analysis at the board? Maybe a rhetorical question, something for later. And then maybe for the planner, how do we designate this, or will we, how does, what's the process of making sure that emergency services know where properties are in this one driveway? Do we let, how do we do that, 911 stuff?
You would address it, so all three properties are indicated as the entrance there and then you have to have signage inside indicating which property is which when you get inside there. Part of 911 designation.
Okay, thanks.
That was mentioned at the TRC meeting and that curb cut will have to be named.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
For that purpose.
And that was probably mentioned by the fire chief?
Uh, yes, he was. Yep, he was there.
Then you were in good hands.
Just a point on your AOT. It says that the permit requires a paved apron to be constructed from the edge of the highway, pavement 15 feet onto the site. So that's, that's what you're confirming what you had to say.
All right, any other, Bill, do you have a comment?
Just some plan updates. The well radiuses are shown there. You probably wanted to mention them to show the required setback. You have gray areas with a perk test in the middle of it, which I'm assuming is going to be a septic location. So you might want to label that that's the possible septic location. In the back, you have what looks like perk test, but it's not shaded like the other ones. So is that the potential septic location in the back? The right of way requires that you provide language on the plat showing any special agreements of ownership, construction, or maintenance should be shown on the plat as well as a deed. That's a subdivision regulation, E Road Access Construction Regulation. So what are the terms and/or sort of allowances, you know, pass and repass on that roadway that should be shown on the deed? So if somebody doesn't have the actual deed or doesn't have the easement requirements, they can see the plat and know what the rights are as far as the ownership, construction, and maintenance should be shown on the deed so that we don't have a situation where neighbors are arguing over what the responsibilities are. And that would be also to try to show if it's going to be held in common, what is the relationship between the property owners in that regard? So is there going to be some sort of association for the roadway? I mean, how would you do the common driveway and just denote it on the deed?
Again? He says he would like to consult an attorney on that. Whether or not there's going to be an association?
No, no, regardless of the association, probably not correct. But how do the people know their rights for that? And those should be sort of stated as it says, "Any special agreements of ownership, construction, or maintenance should be shown on the plat as well as the deed." So whatever you put here, you put on the deed.
You should put together an agreement, which we should review. Spelling out how the road is going to be handled. We also should get some information on the construction of the road.
Yep.
I'd like to see the form factor for the two smaller lots put on the plan.
Okay.
And the plan shows 40-foot right of way, understanding that dash lines usually mean that, but a right of way has a different meaning in subdivision. So your narrative says it's an easement. Your plan shows it as a right of way, which means is it, you know, an actual right of way or is it an easement? So you probably want to put on the plan that this is an easement, correct? It's not an actual...
To me, they're one and the same as a land surveyor.
Well, one is, one is a separate property in which the road resides and another one is an easement in which it is laying on top of the existing property. So which one is this? A street has a right of way 50 foot wide or whatever. Inside that street is, is the property of the right of way. Is this something that is actually a separate designation of property? Therefore, you have 1, 2, 3 lots plus the right of way itself, which means you don't mean frontage, or is it an easement?
This is a driveway. It's not going to have a 50-foot corridor like a roadway would.
An easement or fee or own...
The fee will be owned by Lot 3, the larger lot, subject to the rights of lots 1 and 2 to use it.
Well, then that becomes a problem because if the fee, if it's actually property, then it interrupts the frontage and it creates separate lots.
That's why I'm saying it's a driveway owned by Lot 3, so there is no interruption of ownership.
On the plan, yeah, right. Okay, so it's a, it's an easement across all of that between the parties. I mean, if it's a driveway, that's a physical construction. Is it an easement or is it a right of way?
Well, you're looking at it, it's an easement. The, the fee is going to be owned by the owner of the middle lot and the other parties can have a right to cross that access. There are lots.
Yeah, but in that fee, if that fee is a separate piece of property, then that's a piece of property.
It's part of...
Okay. So it's an easement to the other people? All right. So I'd recommend you maybe label it as such, otherwise it looks like it's a separate roadway which interrupts your frontage.
Yep, no, we understand the implications of interrupting the frontage.
You have to light that? Is that going to have to be lighted, illuminated at night or is it, or not?
I wouldn't think so. It's a, you know, it's a state highway, but it's not super well traveled, especially at night.
Is the 40-foot easement, does that extend up? It extends up to the access into Lot 1 and then it comes up and takes a right onto Lot 2? Is this extended? Okay. And so the agreement would just...
If you could respond into the microphone, it would be helpful so we have it on the record.
Oh, I see. Okay. I understand. I got it.
So I can give you that plan that shows the orange easement, if you will, but the language of easements for ingress, egress and utilities would be specific to the orange area. It is a driveway owned by Lot 3, subject to the rights of 1 and 2 to use it.
So to your point, you'll have a utility easement across that to get the utilities in.
Absolutely. That's inclusive.
So that, you want to make sure that's in the language that you put on the plat then?
Total agreement with you.
Okay, got it.
Just to be clear, we're going to change the labeling on the plat from right of way to easement. Is that accurate?
I mean, is that what it is? Because right of way has an indication it's a separate piece of...
As a surveyor, they're, they're both easements and rights of ways.
Right.
You can call a power line a right of way or an easement. They're, they're both correct.
In your language, you call it an easement, but on the plan, you call it a right of way.
Okay. Sorry about that.
Reconcile that, I think is the best thing to do. And then just, you know, mark that those are possible septic situa locations and mark the radius of your well.
Yep.
Dimension line.
Do you have a copy of your report that I could read?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's just what I just wanted. There you go.
All right. Any other questions from the board? All right.
One question.
Go ahead, Julie.
Who's alternate?
Oh, I'm sorry. We're back to you, Julie. If you would please sit.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the waiver to 174-9B as it applies to the source of soils information. All seconds. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I thought your request was that we could name the source, because I had a concern with the source not being named. But you were asking to use a different source for the soil calculation. Is that correct? I don't like the idea of putting soil information that didn't come from anywhere.
Oh, this comes from the federal government. It used to be in little books. I'm sure you've seen them with a fold out, terrible aerial photography.
You named the source.
Yes.
And so I would like to include the source, but waive the requirement you use the other ones you didn't use.
I'm not quite following, unless you want me to put NRCS in note form, is what you're asking. Okay. That's easy.
I don't think it is, but I just, I would like you to put, earlier you mentioned the source for this in your presentation.
If you could make the comment into the microphone. You can carry the mic with you if you walk over to the map.
Makes me feel like a celebrity. I don't like to do that. Note 8, which is on the right-hand column below Note 9 with some space, does mention the NRCS USDA Websoils. If you've never been on it, you should get on it. It's too easy. And you'll see your house there and it's a beautiful aerial image. You can measure on it and it's a wonderful tool.
We don't really need a waiver.
Yes, because I believe your regulations are asking for a HIS map or Order 1 map, which only a soil scientist can do.
Go ahead, Roger.
Oh, I make a motion we grant the waiver to using a HIS or a, what's the other one? 1?
Order 1.
Order 1 and allow the applicant to use the NRCS as noted on Note A on the plan.
So before you go with that, then I'll withdraw my motion so that Roger can make his motion. And I'll second Roger's motion. How's that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, very good. You got your waiver.
Thank you.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept this application as complete. All seconds. All in favor?
Discussion.
Sorry, go ahead, do it, Roger.
I don't think we have sufficient information on the driveway and we also do not have the notes that are going to go on the plan or the agreement regarding the driveway. So I think, I don't think we can approve this tonight if we want to hold a public hearing. I think that information is still required.
So you're saying we're not accepting it because it's not complete?
Roger, I think, is proposing that we do not accept it as complete.
Not what he said.
I understand. Can we make that a condition of approval?
I wouldn't do that. I mean, I think that's, I think we need to know the standards to which the driveway will be built and I think that we should review the agreement governing the road maintenance.
Governing the what, Roger?
The driveway maintenance.
Maybe you mean to say easement, maybe, instead of maintenance?
There needs to, in my view, there needs to be probably an association that is charged with the maintenance of the driveway and provides for a contribution to the repairs and expenses, snow plowing, and that should be reviewed.
Is that our business or is that the business of the lawyers associated with this subdivision?
It's our business. I mean, I, when I represented a planning board, I had the unenviable task of reading these things, agreements and reviewing them. And worse, doing condominiums, which are really not exciting things to read. But that was one of the things I did as a planning board attorney. And I think that we need to review that. We need to make sure that this road is maintained and provides adequate access.
And I expect this is for the protection of future lot owners.
Yes. Yes, but can we, can that portion be done before the subdivision is done?
Absolutely. It needs...
Is it all inclusive?
I mean, if this was a standard subdivision without a driveway and you put in, say, five lots, there would be an association that governed all of this and that would be in place before it was approved.
If I may, it's a requirement in your subdivision regulations for the three. I mean, a driveway shall not serve more than three lots. Each driveway shall have a minimum right of way 30 feet, which gentlemen indicated is 40. And driveways cross one lot to reach another. Yeah, if the driveway's, in the case of the driveway, may not extend to the boundaries beyond the three. And the last sentence is, "Any special agreements of ownership, construction, or maintenance should be shown on the plat as well as in the deeds." So I think what Mr. Murray is pointing out is that whatever the extent of those, something needs to be shown on there indicating that there is an agreement of ownership, construction, or maintenance on the plat.
So my question then is, does that prevent us from accepting this application as complete? Or is that something that we can address after we've accepted it as complete?
I think you can work out the details, yeah, I mean, of that language and make sure it's on there. What we don't want to do is get in a situation where it's forwarded to us in the planning office to work out the language, because this is, access is an important issue. So you should work it out as a board and we'll make sure we enforce it.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just wondering whether we can accept it as complete and then continue the hearing? Or if the board's preference is to have these details worked out before we accept it as complete?
Well, Roger, how long does it take to get some of this stuff done? You'd know better than the rest of us.
Depends how busy your attorney is.
It's not an insignificant, it's not an insignia.
But I mean, is it, is it an in-office visit or do we have to go? But I mean, is it an in-office visit or do we have to go, like the hospital bit is an in-office visit? So it's all done right there in the office? Or do you have to do the stuff and then send it over to the county and then have it come back?
No, it doesn't get recorded. They would provide, surveyor would put the information on the plan, and the draft of the maintenance repair agreement would come before this board. We would review it, and that is part of the final approval.
Roger, you're making a point here. I mean, and I don't have a thought one way or the other whether we should accept that it's complete and forward, but Roger's right. We need to understand how this thing's, the driveway will be built, maintained, so we can get a piece of fire apparatus down there if necessary. God forbid. And, you know, my quick reaction to that is that we make that a condition of going, you know, we could say this application is complete, but we make it a condition of continued approvals until we have received and understand what is going to be built and it becomes part of the documents of record, in which I think Bill is saying we shouldn't, and I don't think we want to do this, we shouldn't just kind of Olay it over to Bill and say, "Go figure it out." No, I'm not suggesting we're doing that, but I think we get, I would be comfortable saying it's complete, but with a condition that we're not going any further until we understand what Roger's issues are.
Yeah, my sense of the board here is that we are in general agreement that we need to have those details on how to build and maintain the driveway before we approve this application. The question is, do we accept the application as complete now as opposed to waiting until we have those details? So I've made the motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion about it?
Just, I think the important issue is that you have the opportunity to discuss the language in a public hearing so that the abutters can react to that, so that, we're not saying it's going to be a condition later on, but it is a topic of discussion with the language in front of you in a public venue. So how you sequence that is up to the board.
Yeah, I'm not comfortable with saying it's complete because I don't know how we're going to get to Lot 1 or Lot 2. You know, what are my rights? I don't think I know how my property is served by this right-of-way, this easement. So I'm not comfortable making it a condition. I think we have to say it's not complete.
You know what? I'm withdrawing my second.
I'd also like to let the applicant have enough time to get all of that stuff done without rushing, because if we just say it's complete and do the date certain, you know, he might not be able to do it in time and get rushed and pushed off and rushed and pushed off.
Even if we say it is not complete, we still have to go to a date certain unless they want to notice the abutters. So whether you say it's complete or not isn't going to affect the date certain.
So should we ask the applicant?
I don't know if the applicant can decide what he wants to do until we've made a vote, but certainly if he'd like to make an opinion as to what you'd like to do, if you could come up to the microphone, it would be helpful. And identify yourself, please.
The thought across my, that across my.
Give you your name, please.
My name is David Flint.
Thank you.
The property owner, and I had been thinking about the possibility of having an attorney look at some kind of a ownership of that road, of the driveways, and how that would be divided and documented in the deeds and the plans.
Do you have a sense of how much time you'd like to have to be able to do that?
Everything takes longer than you think it should.
Of course.
I haven't talked to an attorney yet, but I have one in mind that I could talk to tomorrow.
Well, one of the options we have is to continue this to next month, and in the event that you're not prepared by the meeting next month, we can continue it again.
Okay, that sounds reasonable.
I'll withdraw my second.
Paul will withdraw his second. Thank you.
I guess I'm going to concur. I would like to see the application accepted as complete, because I do believe there's some abutters here who would like to speak on it.
All right, so my motion stands. Paul's withdrawn his second. Would anybody else like to second the motion? All right, failing that, would somebody like to make another motion? October 7th.
I make a motion that we continue the public hearing till October 7th.
At 7:00 PM here in the Great Hall?
Few people ahead of you, but I'm talking at 7:00 PM.
And that includes having not accepted it as complete?
We have not yet accepted it as complete, that's correct. Would anybody like to second Roger's motion? Steve seconds it. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, if you could work with the planner to get what you need. If you could come to the microphone.
May I request that the fact that the waiver was accepted be obvious in the record, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, the next item on the agenda is Brewster Academy Tax Map 218-161, 209 South Main Street, Case 2025-28, Site Plan Review for Dormitory, the formal submission and public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Thurston was a party to these conversations, so if you have no objection, I'd like to.
I have no objection if you, Mr. Thurston, would you like to?
Mr. Thurston?
Mr. Thurston?
John.
John, would you like to sit in Paul's place for this hearing? And Steve Webster will recuse himself, and I think it's Kathy's turn again.
Okay.
Would you like to sit? Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Doug.
See you, Paul.
Oh, I'll be good. No, I'm just going to turn this.
I know.
There's a stack of them over there.
All right.
Don? All right.
Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Chairman, my name is Tom Hildreth. I'm an attorney at McLean Middleton in Manchester, New Hampshire. We're outside counsel to Brewster Academy, and with me tonight from Brewster Academy is Peter Gilligan, who's the Chief Technology and Operations Officer for the company. We're here to talk about a change of use and minor site plan review for the former topsides bed and breakfast at 209 South Main Street, shown on the plan to my right. This is an 1880s vintage colonial structure that's had many lives in its past. Most recently, it's been a bed and breakfast for about 20 years. Before that, as far as we can tell, it was a dentist office and the home of the dentist. I'm not sure how long that occurred. Brewster acquired the property on the 1st of August and desires to change the use to a girls' dormitory with up to 12 girls residing in the five bedrooms, each with its own en suite bathroom. In addition to the five bedrooms, there's a apartment for a faculty parent advisor for the girls living there. Like the change of use case earlier tonight, there are no changes to the exterior of this property whatsoever. None of the grounds are changing, none of the lighting, none of the landscaping, none of the anything, and there's also very few changes internal. There are no structural changes. There'll be some furniture that may be rearranged, but otherwise it's in move-in and ready-to-use condition. We filed an application in advance of the closing with the zoning board for a special exception, which was granted earlier in August. Likewise, we filed our application for site plan review just before the closing. We had a TRC meeting on 8/13. We've had a chance to review the planner's report. We concur with all the conditions that he has suggested. There's one amendment I want to make to both my letter and to the planner's report. In my letter, I said that we were going to replace the existing signage with alternative signage of the same size in the same location. The planner's staff report says that there'll be no signage at all. I was wrong, he was wrong. Brewster Academy will place a sign on the face of the building consistent with its other signage throughout its campus. I don't think the building's been named yet, Peter. Once it is, they'll go through the standard building permit process to secure the sign.
So the purpose of the sign will be to identify the building?
Exactly right, right, right. So just a little more about the property. It's about 0.31 acres. It's major frontages on South Main Street. It's also got a little leg that jogs out to Green Street. It's adjacent to other, adjacent and across the street from other Brewster properties. The building, as I mentioned, was built in 1880 according to municipal records. It's about 4,000 square feet. There are five bedrooms with six and a half baths, including one and a half baths that serve the apartment unit. There are seven spaces that are accessed via the two driveways, two spaces that are accessed from the driveway off of South Main Street, and five spaces that are accessed from the driveway off of Green Street. Brewster is going to direct that the faculty advisor who lives in the building use the parking off the Green Street access. The students who live there most likely will not have cars. If they do have cars, per Brewster policy, they have to park them in a central parking location, not here at the building. So one of the things we mentioned in our application to the zoning board was that this use will generate substantially less traffic than the previous use as a bed and breakfast and the previous use as a dental office. Really, just the faculty family that lives there will be the only people regularly using the driveway. Yeah, as I mentioned, we're in accord with the planner's suggested conditions of approval and would respectfully request that you accept the application as complete and grant approval tonight. Pleased to answer any questions you might have.
I have a question on the number of parking spaces behind the building. Even with my magnifying glass, I couldn't sort it out.
So there are five behind the building?
Yep.
If you could take the microphone with you. Thank you.
The two that come off of South Main Street don't seem to be separately striped, but they're not going to be used.
And is the garage going to be converted?
No, there's no plan to convert the garage.
That's additional parking?
Yes, Peter Gilligan, Brewster Academy. Yes, Vaughn, it's just storage at this.
Is there going to be any change to the lighting? That was one of the things apparently came up at the Board of Adjustment.
No, there's no intended change to the lighting. The only other change besides the signage is going to be to the key card access system to the building, but that won't be visible from the outside.
Any other comments from the board or questions?
There were some waivers requested.
Yeah, we didn't actually request any waivers. I think those are holdovers from other staff reports. One of them relates to form factors for a subdivision, one of them relates to TOPA, which we actually show on the plan.
Did we see a TRC on this before? Do I remember seeing a TRC report on this before?
I don't remember seeing a TRC report on it before.
But they did go to TRC.
Yes. They did, I know they did go to TRC, but I don't remember seeing the report.
I think as the staff report noted that there'll be some building permit issues with the inspector we have to get from an adjoining town, I think, because our building inspector has some relationship to the school, and there were questions asked about fire detection and prevention systems. There's a, the building's got existing sprinkler system installed today. It's got strobe lights on its exit signs. You know, we're convinced that when we are able to get the building inspector from a nearby town over, they're going to find it to be, you know, fully compliant, but as the staff report notes, that that'll be a process that occurs after the site plan approval.
What's the timeframe that students are going to be in this building, then, as you hope?
Soon as possible.
Could you describe the number of bedrooms current versus the number of bedrooms future?
Sure, it's all the same. There's five bedrooms plus the apartment. There was an apartment for the people who owned the bed and breakfast. They had five guest rooms. There's still an apartment that's going to be occupied by the faculty advisor, and the same five bedrooms are going to be occupied by the girls. Probably going to be two girls per room. The school wants to have the ability to put up to 12, so possibly a couple of triples, but off the bat, they'll just be, each be a double, so 10 girls plus the faculty advisor.
So you're saying there are really six bedrooms?
Yes, well, there's a whole apartment with its own kitchen. The bedrooms don't have their own eating facilities. They're just, they have bathrooms internal to them for the guests of the bed and breakfast and now for the girls who live there. The only kitchen facility is in the apartment where the, previously the owner of the bed and breakfast, and now the faculty advisor will live.
I see on the tax card, five bedrooms. I presume that includes the apartment.
I can't speak to the tax card and its accuracy or not.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
I do. So keeping the character of our town and our gateway to our community, we've seen Brewster Academy cut a lot of trees along Main Street. Some of them have been healthy, in my view. Have you, have you looked at these trees to decide if they're healthy or not, and do you plan on cutting them down?
There's no plans to cut the trees down.
There is one tree that needs to be cut down. There's a large maple that has rot in the center of it that is in between our parking lot at Anderson Hall and the bed and breakfast, so we have a tree company coming out within three weeks to take it down.
Do you plan on replanting a new tree?
Maybe. And John, I'd like to follow up with you on that. We've never cut any trees down on Main Street that weren't, the town cut some trees down on Main Street that we didn't agree with being cut either, so as far as I know, in the last nine years, no healthy trees have been cut down along the Main Street corridor.
All right, I'll make a motion that we accept this application as complete.
I'll second it.
Kathy seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, thank you. All right, we'll open this up to public comment. Would anybody from the public like to speak to this application? Hearing none, we'll close the public comment. Is there any further discussion amongst the board? All right, I'll make a motion to approve this application for site plan.
I'll second that.
Kathy seconds it. Any further discussion? All right, I'm sorry, I should have added the conditions of approval to my motion. The recommended conditions of approval from the planner would be, I'm sorry? There we go.
Do we need to grant the waivers first?
There were no waivers requested.
No waivers requested.
Yeah, that's my, sorry.
So the, the normal inclusions such as recording of the plans and recording of the deeds, as well as a railing for the steps at the bottom of the front walkway should be erected. be erected. The mention of, do we need to include the mention of the building and code enforcement official in this?
Well, I mean, we have to get somebody that is separate from Brewster affiliation. I think most of the code issues that you're facing are like fire and building code. So, I mean, if you want to mention in there that they must meet the requirements of the fire department and the building department, then that's fine. It's not really within your jurisdiction. So the access and egress, the only thing when we did a tour for ZBA was, I guess is a question if means of egress is in another dorm room, the adjoining door has to be left open.
Well, so I would say, I guess, as you just suggested in my motion, just to say that the fire codes and enforcement of them by the Wolfboro Fire Department should be adhered to.
Correct.
Isn't that normal?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, anyway, so I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Could you add one more? If there's any lighting changes, they'll be dark sky compliant?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If, if there's any lighting changes, they'd be dark sky compliant?
Yes, so that's fine. If there are any exterior lighting changes, that they should be dark sky compliant. Now, there's the motion. Kathy, second that? All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Very good, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is Lakes Region Community Developers and Eastern Lakes Region Housing Coalition Tax Map 176-020-001 Beck Drive, Case 2025-29 Site Plan Review, Site Plan Amendment to Harriman Hill Phase III Formal Submission Public Hearing. Kathy will step down. And Jane, will you sit? Thank you. Yes, so finding a fact, thank you, Peter, for finding a fact on the Brewster dormitory. It's not contrary to the spirit of the ordinance. It's within a good use of the building for the town, for the school's purposes. It reduces the traffic, as was previously discussed. I think that'll do it. Thank you for the prompt. All right, very good.
Good evening. I'm Kevin Leonard from North Point Engineering. I'm here with Carol LaSalle, who's the Real Estate Development Director from Lakes Region Community Developers, and Megan Carrier, who's her legal counsel. So probably everyone's familiar with Harriman Hill. It's been in the works for 15 years or so. As you've probably heard, Phase III is broken ground. We had 2023 Planning Board approval. On the left, there is the rendering that I presented to the planning board in 2023. And on the right is the rendering of the current plan. From afar, you can't identify a lot of differences, but I'm going to kind of walk through what the differences are. I guess before I do that, I just sort of briefly explain why, why the differences have occurred. After the 2023 Planning Board approval, in the following winter, 23, 24, the architect designed the buildings. And, you know, ultimately, when you kind of get to the refined elements of the buildings, you realize things that need to be altered or adjusted. So on Buildings B and D, utility rooms were added to the ends of the prop, of the buildings. There were some first floor adjustments. There was adjustments to utility surfaces in and out of the building to align with the mechanical engineer's design of the interior plumbing and utilities. And they, during the design of the buildings, they also properly sized the propane needs for the, for the heating of the, of the properties. And the original design showed a single enclosure with propane tanks and, which were two tank, 2,000 gallon tanks. And when they worked through final design, they realized that they needed more propane than that. So on the current plan, there are two propane tank locations shown. Also mentioned that last year, June of '24, the project went out to bid and we were over budget. And so over the last 12 months, the design team and general contractor has been trying to work to basically close that gap. So we've done a bunch of value engineering to try to reduce costs, and LRCD has also chased around gap funding to basically make up the gap so that the project is financially viable. So this is an amended site plan to basically address the design tweaks and the value engineering. I did submit, and I don't know if the board got, did the board get these spreadsheets?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and your summary letter, too.
Perfect. So at Bill's suggestion, we had put together this spreadsheet that sort of outlined the specific changes. If I just kind of walk through that, and if you like, I'll go over there and point to them on the plans. So parking, the original plan had 59 parking spaces. Your zoning ordinance only requires 40. Originally, we're trying to have more parking, because your regulation is only one space per unit, and then one for every, for every three units, you need one additional space. So the total requirement needed is 40. In the value engineering effort to save money, basically on gravels and asphalt and that sort of thing, we've added islands within the parking lot, reducing from the 59 parking spaces down to 40. So that's part of the parking item. We also, in the original design, had vertical granite curb adjacent to all the, all the parking lots and between the parking lot and the sidewalks. As a cost-saving measure, we've implemented Cape Cod berm. In most locations, except for where we felt vertical granite curb would, would be more functional from a standpoint of AVA ramps, so in front of, specifically in front of these buildings here, A and B and, and D, we kept the vertical granite curb on the face, basically where you pull up, on the face there to the sidewalk, because that, you can have ramps that come down and on a slope section of vertical granite curb, much better than you can kind of warp Cape Cod berm. But in other locations, you know, around islands and in areas where we didn't have that condition with a sidewalk, was trying to accommodate ramps, we've switched over to the Cape Cod berm. From a drainage perspective, both curb types will, will, you know, contain runoff and, and the drainage system will work kind of as intended. In the original design, we had some area drains that were nylon plastic, area drains that are like a plastic, a couple different sizes, but 12 to 24 inches. As a cost-saving measure, we're switching those to precast concrete. Again, they'll function the same with proper inlets where we need them along the frontages of the buildings. Stone drip edges is a change. I don't know that it was really an identified item on the Planning Board approval in 2023, but it was an item that was in the, in the original bid set that went out last year that we were trying to have drip edges on all the roof lines. It's actually fairly expensive when you have this number of buildings and a fair amount of roof lines to put drip edge in. And so it was something that we're removing. Technically, it's not a change from the 23 approval because it wasn't on those plans, but we are not eliminating drip edge on the new construction proposal. Landscaping, there was a fairly extensive landscaping plan in the original design, specifically species selection around the units. And so we've kind of toned that back to try to save some money in landscaping. We still have a fairly comprehensive planting plan for the build out with tree trees and, and foundation plantings along all the frontages of the buildings, which just sort of toned it down a bit to try to save some money. The buildings E and F here and here, they have decks off the back. And in the original design, they were going to have roofs, just to basically have a cover space off the back. And to save money, we've removed, we've removed those roofs. And so the new plan does, removes the roofs. That, that caused us to have to kind of adjust the gutter systems that we had on the back of those buildings to accommodate, the roof line's no longer at the edge of the deck, it's back of the base of the building. So we modified the roof drain systems to accommodate that change. And then I mentioned basically a series of design changes that were basically adjustments to align the final building design and, and the civil site design. And those included sewer and water services, as I mentioned, propane tanks. In the original design, there was a single propane tank shown over here. And the current design, when they actually sized the tank needs, we've got two tanks here and two tanks here. They're enclosed, they're above ground tanks, but they're enclosed with fencing, and they're on a concrete pad. We shifted Buildings A and B to accommodate grading changes. I mentioned first floor adjustments that had a lot to do with these, the roads are not flat, as you can envision. It's kind of uphill. As you come up the hill, kind of to the, about here is the high point, and then it comes back around. And so as you're running the drives along the face of the buildings, the buildings are stepping up, each kind of, each unit's kind of stepping up and then stepping up. And so the final first floor elevations needed to get adjusted because the work, basically the architecture of the roof lines on the top side, we're going to make an adjustment. They're trying to make all the roofs to kind of come together and kind of look correctly. And so we need to make some adjustments, you know, six to nine inch type adjustments to get all that to kind of come together and be a comprehensive look, if you will, from the architecture standpoint. And then when you're adjusting first floor elevations, you need to adjust front walks and sort of the fine grading in through here along the sidewalks to basically make sure that we're hitting all the doors that we're trying to hit as we adjusted all those elevations through the site. So those are the highlights of those changes. I wanted to mention that we went to TRC. I have not received a staff report yet, but I think that we addressed the comments that came up at TRC. We did give that amended alteration of terrain permit for the current design, which came in in June, and the town has a copy of. We were also, before the ZBA earlier this summer, to get the extension of the approval there, because that was sort of, the timing of that was tight, so we just got the extension to make sure that there was no kind of lapse in, in that. And then lastly, I had worked with Shawna Saunders before Bill had come on, and she had recommended, the original application had some waivers associated with it, which were approved and still stand, and, and the changes that we proposed still rely on those waivers, and they're already granted. But for sort of just clarity to the, in the application and to the board, I submitted a letter that basically explained that fact, that basically these waivers existed, that we still need them, that they already exist. And I just shared the details of those at the time that they were submitted upon, just for clarity that they're there, I guess, and they're still connected to this application, we believe. And then one other thing that I wanted to mention is the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, which is one of the entities that's providing funding, funding for the project. When you have a certain number of units within development, they're encouraging some sort of recreational facility associated with, with the project. And this third phase triggered, triggered that requirement. And so, and reflecting on what we could do for some sort of recreational improvement to the development that could, that basically could benefit everyone in the development, all three phases, we're proposing a basketball playing area, which I brought this plan along, which I also submitted to you folks. This is the as-built of Phase 1, so Beck Drive is coming in here, and these were the Phase 1 buildings. And Phase 3 is up here, up the hill, kind of rolling back around with the emergency access down here. This location right here, kind of, if you go out there, it's kind of like a green area in between sidewalks. That was originally approved as, as a clubhouse in Phase 1, but didn't get built because of basically unforeseen ledge conditions and whatnot. Basically, the budget was way over budget way back in Harriman, in Harriman Hill Phase 1, and they couldn't afford to make the clubhouse happen. I bring that up only because this was going to be a building with impervious surfaces and the whole drainage system was designed to accommodate that, that impervious area. So we've located a basketball playing area in that location that's smaller than the proposed building that it was originally designed for, so that stormwater is addressed.
Fence, lit, time of day, use?
We, right now, are not proposing fencing. It's an organic grass area. It'll be faced, facing away from parking. And it's, there's a building here and here, so any like errant balls, if you miss a basketball, it'll be kind of go into the lawn here, but not towards what cars are and parking is occurring. So it seems like it's relatively safe from that perspective. Right now, there's no plan to light it or fence it. Yeah, there are, there's existing like streetlights in the, in the parking lot, so there'd be like, so some ambient light there.
Dark sky compliant, I assume?
All proposed lighting is dark sky compliant, yes.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
There was some talk about water metering at the TRC level. Is that conversation continuing?
I, I guess, it was brought, it was brought up in curiosity about water metering. The, it wasn't clear to us, what, what the discussion was, was that the, if this development may be perceived as being moved forward now, there might have been a master meter at the end of Beck Drive.
Correct.
Which doesn't exist. It wasn't clear to us that, that the town specifically wanted that now, or, or frankly, I don't know if that's a reasonable request of us now, given the fact that we already have an approved project and, and it's kind of like an after the fact comment at this point. If the town feels differently about that, I guess we could certainly talk about it, but, but it wasn't our intention to put that in.
If I may, it was brought up that a meter should be put at the street, but it was, as indicated, it was really a more of a long-term discussion. If we meter, meter at the street and then we pick up all the flow into the site, they meter at the, at the buildings now, so the flow from the street into the buildings could have leakage and you can't pick it up if that's the case. So in the future, you might want to work with them, but it really takes a policy by the Select Board and the Water Department to determine whether or not we move forward.
I see. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you labeled that road as Beck Drive because you do have a couple of the units, but nothing that shows on anything you presented tonight other than that plan locates where this is.
On this plan, I should refer.
Yep.
We can definitely do that. The title block does refer to Beck Drive, but we could certainly label that plan, no problem.
Would you care to speak to the new waivers?
There are no new waivers.
Oh. I'm sorry, yes, you're right. This is, I'm looking at the document from 23. I apologize.
No problem.
All right. I'll make a motion to accept this application as complete.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Will open this up to public hearing. Would anybody from the public like to speak to this application?
Good evening, John Thurston. So I'm on page sheet C7, and the town's built some big parking lots and some projects, and we've seen how the water flows and where it doesn't flow and how it impacts handicap access areas and those curb cut areas. You, you explained that you removed or added a bunch of curbing. Could you, could you go into your explanation? It was kind of fast, you, you, and we'll start with that.
So like, everywhere that there's, there was curbing, there still is curbing. So, and I guess maybe the part that was confusing is, the original design had all vertical granite curb everywhere. So around basically all the parking stalls and all the islands, it was all vertical granite curb on the, on the 23 design. What we've done is swapped some of that vertical granite curb to Cape Cod berm, because it's more affordable. And we've done that in locations where we didn't think it would impact handicap, handicap ramps. So we...
Cape Cod berm?
Of course. If you're not familiar with it, Cape Cod berm is also referred to as Batuminous curb. It's, it's about a foot wide and is the paving contract... It's, it's about a foot wide and is, the paving contractor can, can lay it down with a piece of machinery that basically still has six inches reveal, so the back of it's still six inches tall. Um, it's just a foot wide and ramped up, kind of in this fashion. Does that answer that question?
So, so with that said, uh, our guys around here have these really nice diamond plows with real sharp edges on them. Are they going to peel them up?
The answer to that is, one of the disadvantages of Cape Cod berm is, is, is that it, it doesn't like to be tackled by, 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 by plows. These are private parking lots, they'll be maintained by the maintenance staff of, of places to be developers, they'll be putting stakes out, I'd assume, and, and, and anything they damage, they're going to have to fix, so it's sort of their own interest to try to protect Cape Cod berm, um, you know, during maintenance activities.
So what I'm thinking about is, uh, when you stake, you'll be staking on the ground side and not on the parking lot side, so basically when you, when these guys are plowing and there's, uh, four inches of slush or whatever, and they've made a pass initially, they, they may not see that outside edge, and then if you get into them, you've created a chunk out of something and you've created a possible, you know, undulation where somebody's going to walk, so that, that's a, that's a, that's a concern of mine. So when, when you have the, uh, your parking lots and you have your, your drain systems, I'm looking at seat, she seven, a C7 here, uh, it looks like the, the drains are really far apart. Can you, can you go over that for me?
Pretty typical, you know, so basically, we're, 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 um, we're, we're creating, uh, crown on, on, on the paved surfaces, so basically the drive itself is crowned, and then in most cases, the, the parking stalls are pitched back towards the edge of driveway, so you're creating gutter lines, and then the driveway itself has, uh, pitch, right? The vertical grade of the drive is working up around to the top of the hill and then back around, and so we're creating flow lines along the curb and in that, in, in the gutter lines to, and, and have catch basins at the low points. And we, we, you know, these aren't huge parking lots and for, for the amount of water that we're talking about, we think these inlet's are adequate.
So could you talk to the ADA access areas and where the water won't be in those areas?
As I just mentioned, the, um, the parking stalls are pitched at 2%, which is the maximum grade that you can have in an ADA, uh, space, and that's in both directions, so there was a lot of care taken on the, um, where the ADA accessible units are and the path all the way back to the community room. You'll notice that the, the grade, when you kind of come up to the intersection of the reverse P, and then you work up along kind of the straight stretch and around the corner all the way to the kind of far corner, you are, um, if, if, along that frontage, you're picking up all of the ADA units, and that's why the drive is at 2%, so that we're basically making sure that no grade is greater than 2% and exceeding ADA requirements, and we've got that, so we've got all the ADA units tucked into that, that, that band of design, and we've got a sidewalk system that brings it all the way back down to the community room that is all ADA compliant, and then, uh, over on the west side of the development, those grades exceed that, but there's no ADA, ADA, ADA units over there, so, um, it's a fair amount of care to sort that all out.
So to that ADA access point, we, you know, even if, uh, there aren't ADA parking spots, you know, you do sometimes get ADA access because you get cars that just park in a spot that maybe the other ADA spots are taken up, so, uh, um, so how far are the distances away from the ADA ramp access areas in your parking lot? What's the, what's your general range?
John, I, I appreciate your concerns for all of this. I would ask that you address your comments to the board.
Okay, sorry. So, uh, I'm also asking the board about their gutter system and where the gutters are going to leak out, because if they're moving them to different areas, how are they catching that water? And, uh, on the other buildings, a lot of the, a lot of the construction design, what you saw is you saw a pitch of a roof that ran down over the top of, of the windows, and I, I was up there about a month ago, and you could see a lot of these buildings peeling apart on the sides where a lot of this water was just running down over the buildings, so I'm trying to address the, uh, the, the function of the, of the system and the roof lines and how it's going to wear later on, so that when they, when they, when they get the water onto the ground, where it's going to go from that point, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, that only a couple buildings require gutters, and, and where we do have gutters, the purpose of those gutters are to make sure that we're not sheet flowing untreated stormwater off into the woods and towards the wetland type of thing. AOT on, on these commercial buildings wants stormwater off of roofs to be treated, and, and on those buildings, uh... Without capturing it in gutters, it was, it was going to basically be untreated condition leaving the building, so we've captured it in, in gutters in a roof drain system that actually brings it back to the closed drainage system and to our detention basin, so it gets treatment through the system, um, and so the, the reason behind the gutters is to make sure that we're getting proper treatment, and that's all been approved by alteration terrain.
Thank you. Any, would anybody else from the public like to speak? Does anybody from the board have any further questions or comments? Would anybody like to make a motion? Uh, I'm sorry, yes, close the public hearing. Thank you, Peter. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application.
I'll second it.
With?
Uh, do we need to accept it as complete, I believe, or did we do that?
We did.
Oh, we did, yes, we did, before we opened the public hearing. Thank you.
And are there conditions that need to be?
Uh, I have the conditions, but there are two that, uh, you would probably want to add based on the applicant's discussion about sustaining the validity of the original plan, so, uh, the conditions are listed, but I'll, I'll just go over these. Uh, this is an amendment to the original site plan approval, as such, shall not impact the validity of that approval, with the exception of the amendments as planned, and then the amendments to the plan shall continue the original waivers as previously granted. Anything else? I mean, we wanted to continue that as per what he said in the, in his letter. I can put in the dates of the original approval to make sure it ties back to that.
So would add those as conditions?
Those are con, uh, conditions just to make sure it's clear that what we're approving now is an amendment to this early, uh, you know, uh...
A modification.
Invalidating the prior plan.
Amending not...
And, uh, the rest of them are the statement of the plans, the amendment, uh, projects shall meet all the requirements, original decision is attached here too with the amendment that was proposed, the applicant should be responsible payment of the notice of decisions, no storage is common, uh, vesting perpetuity, substantial completion will be defined as a project, and the conditions in the plans must be part of the building permit application, final drawings is listed as two sets of 24 by 36, uh, one set of 11 by 17, electronic, PDF. Uh, anything not in compliance with the scope of the application at any point in time shall be considered a violation of the site plan, uh, warranty of season, this is by the county administrator, and a plan for rectifying such violations. Uh, all of the documentation submitted in the application package and any, uh, by the applicant, any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated or revised, clarified in some areas or proceeded in part, and in case of conflict, information between documents, the most recent documentation here in should be determining, and the following language is added to the notice of decision as regarding appeals pursuant to RSA 677, call it 15, a great party may appeal the decision to the Carroll County Superior Court within 30 days of the date that the board voted to approve or disapprove the application, or the ZBA pursuant to 676, call it five, three within 30 days of the date that the board made its decision. So the two amendments, uh, to that list would be related to, and I can clean up the language per se, that this is an amendment to the original plan and that original plan should stand, with the exception of the amendments here too, and then the waivers should stand also.
Peter, do you agree to that?
I agree to that.
All right. I'll second that motion. Uh, Roger seconded, or April Roger seconded, that's fine, just want to make sure it got seconded. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much.
And the finding of fact?
Uh, finding of fact, well, it's your motion, Peter, go ahead.
Uh, that the, uh, revised plans do not change the intent or the scope of this project, and, uh, they are also instrumental in making it so that it is possible financially.
Very good, thank you, Peter. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the work program.
Just, uh, I handed out a letter that should be in front of you, and I'm trying to find my own copy, uh, buried in, yeah, if I may, Roger.
Hey, folks.
Hold on a second, Bill. Uh, could you take, please take your conversation outside so we can continue our meeting, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill. Bill, if you can get real close, Bill, if you can get real close to that mic.
Sure, I will. Uh, the letter is in reference to my observations over the past month and some of the things that may help the board process and help the staff process. One of the things we want to make sure of is as we're processing these applications, uh, we're processing, you know, private sector applications, and we want to make sure that we're, you know, doing a good job at it, but we're not burning a lot of taxpayer dollars doing that, so how do you create a system that works with the applicant efficiently but reduces sort of, uh, input by staff? So, not input per se, but, you know, FTEs or, you know, hours. So I've made some recommendations here, which we can discuss at a later board meeting. One of the things that we see as we go through these decisions is listing all these plans and keeping up with them, it's sort of the bibliography of the project, you know, all these plans came in, another set of plans came in, so they're transmittals. What we do is we take all the transmittals in and we make the list. So rather than us making the list at the staff level, as developers transmit to us, they would make the list, attach the documents and update the list throughout their process. What that does for us is we compare it to what's coming in, it has a notation as to which meeting it went to, so we're not in a position where we're saying, did we see that already, or is that something I didn't see? So what we require is a single point of contact, uh, and I call it an OPM, an owner's project manager, and the important thing there is, we get maybe three or four emails from different consultants, and staff is sort of trying to put together the story from all that. I think a transmittal list and a cover letter from one point of contact is important, especially in a project like this. Mr. Leonard was good at putting that all together for us, but, uh, the transmittal will mean that when we get to the final decision, you know, the planner's report has a list of all the documents, but you, you might have seen that a week before, and in that interim week, there are a whole bunch more plans coming in. So this basically recommends one point of contact on the application, and that every time they transmit, they add to that list, so we have it at the end for the decision. Uh, TRC, uh, what happens at TRC, I think it's a very valid process, but what happens is the applicant will come in, I have frames of it here, uh, and they'll submit 10 plans, you know, full sets, they go to TRC, and then they submit them again, just for a few changes. So how do we ask them to submit less copies, go through TRC, and then they submit the additional, and I'll describe that later. So if they submit digital, which a lot of them are starting to do, uh, then we can transmit that to everybody, departments, and then we can sit down and maybe have three copies, the large set and the 11 by 17, and then, uh, the narrative. Because again, some of these bigger projects, I'll get a whole bunch of plans, they'll see TRC, they'll change them, and I'm throwing them all out. So it's probably not the most effective use of anybody's resources, so maybe we start TSC earlier, maybe before the application, and it's really a good discussion about, you know, where do we go, and would have to change, you know, check the legality of that, but at least maybe ask for less plans at TRC, you know, and then do it digitally, and then when they make their changes, that's when they submit the full set, and I'll, I'll show you where they actually could do that. So you have a transmittal, maybe changing TRC so they're not submitting, you know, 12 copies or something, and then submitting it all over again with the changes. The other thing is packets by applicants. They know better than, you know, as well as we do, you know, putting together the packets, so let's say the Tuesday before your meeting, they deliver the packets and that's where they deliver all those copies. They'll have 15 copies in the file, and it's, nobody's looking at it until the packets go out, so why not have the applicant, each applicant, put together the packet that we eventually send out? It, considerably, I mean, the packet development is a lot of effort, and a lot of the effort is trying to figure out which ones hasn't the planning board seen, which one, you know, needs to move forward, so the packet is more accurate if the developer is putting it together. We'll stay, take, still take a look at all the documentation you see, but it allows us to sort of, they deliver the packet, so if they have three copies of plans in the file throughout it, that's what we really need internally, we only need your copies when the packet goes out, so why have them fill a file with it, have them put together the packets, and then we send out the packets, and we cross-check it and make sure it's everything that we believe should be sent out. So the master page, so one of the things that happens is your applications, there's several different applications, and they have different organization. Then the planner's report has an organization information, and then the decision is close to that. If you did a master page that basically said, here's all the relevant information that should be on the front of the planner's report and the front of the decision, then we're just copying that over, and we're not, I mean, you have to retype all the information in the application to go into the report, then you have to cut and paste it. So as we've seen this evening by my own work, there's, there's room, little bit of error there when you go cutting and pasting and everything, so I think what we want to do with a master page is, what they do is they submit the page that covers all the pertinent information, map and lot, you know, ownership and all that, and then we just carry that forward into the, uh, planner's review, the master page, and into the decision. So if the mistake is made early, it's not the town making a mistake of a transposition of, you know, map and lot numbers and things like that. Uh, so decision development, currently the decision requires, uh, filing within five days. And one of the things that we see as we get closer to the meeting is applicants coming in and saying, oh, we're going to give you this report, this report. You had one case where we got a report and plans on the Thursday before the meeting. So, you know, when you're doing that, you're trying to review the information, and then at that meeting, trying to get a set of conditions, the planner's report has probably have been done by a prior meeting. So what we want to do is potentially that you would vote on the draft decision, and then at your next, next meeting, vote the approval. It gives you as a board the ability to take a look at the conditions, we can have more time to do better ones, gives us the ability to say to the applicant, you know, because I've been looking at some of the ones, the decisions, and I'm asking the applicant, is this the actual set of plans? This was in the report. It gives us time to reconcile anything, and then you vote on the final document, which the five days start, when you're satisfied that you like the way the decision reads. Uh, template on conditions, a lot of the things you see are, you know, conditions that you have sort of a template for by virtue of the planner's report. I think we could flush those out and actually make a book, in other places I've worked, we've made condition... In other places I've worked, we've made condition book, and it would be, "Here's what you would use for special use for wetlands. Here's what you..." And then what it does for you is, as you approach the decision point, you're saying, "I want to include this one." And it also gives us an ability to run those by council and say, "Can we ask for this?" And that way, you're not in a meeting trying to figure out, "Is this legal?" You've already pre-vetted your conditions, and here's conditions for special use wetlands, here's conditions for subdivision, and they're already developed for you. And all you got to do is sort of pick it out of the book. And what that does is, you can potentially post them on your website. So a butters, you know, applicants can see what the potential eventual outcome might be. So those are really the majority of it. And what this does for us in the staff level and also you is, straighten out some of these issues, like, you know, we had an inordinate amount of plans go through us this evening, and the one we just heard, they had a set of plans pre-TRC and they had a set of plans post-TRC. Having them track all the transmittals and lists, even, you know, what stormwater reports did we get, what correspondence did we get from attorneys, all that should be in a list, and they should keep it. They should tell us as they transmit, "Here, we added a new one." They should try to get a team together that is a singular point of contact. Because, you know, we're working with a stormwater person and we're emailing. We had one plan where the septic designer had to dwell in the front yard and the contractor had to dwell in the backyard. So we're not here to reconcile those things. We're here to say, figure it out next, you know? So what we want out of applicants is that they've all sat down, worked together, and there is one person giving us a reconciled, you know, set of documents. So I think the transmittal is important. TRC is one of the things we'd like to see, is maybe helping the departments by giving them sort of, "Here's some of the things you might want to look at, you know, from a DPW perspective, from a fire perspective," and working with them and say, "Here's my punch list for all TRC." So it's not just, you know, "I'm reviewing for the planning board," but, "Here's the 10 things I want if I'm the fire chief, here's the 10 things I want if I'm the DPW director." So you might get cases that there's a driveway, and there's a culvert crossing that's owned by the driveway, but the work is well up into the site. We should still consider whether or not that culvert and the drainage is working, and have the DPW director direct us to maybe that type of improvement. So what are the things they would be looking for, and then make them a punch list? So when the applicant comes in, if the fire chief said, "This is the kind of access that I want as a minimum," they already know that. So it's really making a punch list per jurisdiction that they can look at. Because, I mean, I think they're looking at it from the perspective of your process. I think they should look at it as from the perspective of their criteria in your process. And I think that'll help you get to a point where you're learning how they think if they have a punch list for your TRC. So I think, you know, we can take it up at a later meeting. I didn't want to go over it in great detail, but these are things that will sort of reduce redundancy. The packet thing alone means that, you know, I'm not going to have somebody come up to me at a meeting and say, "You forgot to put that letter in that I gave you at the last minute." Well, if they do the packets, that's something that they're going to have to make sure happens. So, you know, sometimes, when we do the packets, that, you know, you get everything you can in the file, but maybe not everything needs to move forward, you know? But just, these are ideas based on our reservations. I might have a few more. And I can help if you want to move forward, like the master page, the template conditions, you know? Packages by applicants is, I think, something that we would ask them. We have to go through every conceivable utterance of how to file an application and see where these things are mentioned, and then change them if we choose to move forward with that.
So, Bill, I would say that these are good ideas to consider. I think it warrants further discussion.
Oh, yes.
But we've had a late night. I don't want to...
I know, no more than... Just an intro.
Yeah. Yes, we do. So the last item on the agenda will be public comment. Anybody from the public that would like to speak? Somebody who's waited a long time. Thank you for your patience.
Bonnie Medico. Bonnie Medico from Eastern Lakes Region Housing Coalition. Eastern Lakes has partnered with Lakes Region Community Developers for Harriman Hill for over 15 years. And I want to thank you all for the approval that we got tonight for Harriman Hill Phase 3. And just to remind everybody, Harriman Hill started back in 2004 through an ad hoc planning board committee meeting. So, I should say, just a committee from... Ad hoc committee from the planning board. So 78 units of affordable housing will now be in Wolfboro, and it started here. So thank all past and present planning board, as well as ZBA and select board members. Good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Thanks.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Before we vote on that, I don't know whether everybody knows, but planning department apparently now has one staff member. The person at the front desk showed up one morning, quit, got in the car and drove off. And I think Bill did a very good job at playing one-armed paper hanger and putting together interviews for this number of hearings with no office assistance.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bill.
Remind me to start earlier before those events.
So in other words...
But I still want my letter back.
Is the office door open now, or is it closed partially during the days? Because there's nobody there.
No, no, we're open. In fact, we have a temp filling in Tuesdays to Thursdays that was a former employee here, so... You know, and we're making adjustments, so we're not really... You know, we're improving our voicemails so that people can get directly to us with instructions on a set of appointments, things like that.
Since I have a day job, I have heard from somebody who's trying to get ahold of you guys when there is nobody in the offices, that there are no emails anywhere that anybody can find.
There is a contact form on the town website.
It doesn't have their new stuff.
I think Julie's accurate. There are two names in the directory that are not ours that we need to change.
I'll second your motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.